Bounds, bounds, bonds.
But didn't we get-
There's bonds and bounds.
Bound and bounds.
That's right.
But we got a message from somebody that they didn't have a problem with the bounds.
Oh.
Didn't we?
I thought we had no problem with two of them, but the one that was fifteen inches in was the problem. I don't know, that's, I don't remember.
That customer had called in, he doesn't have a problem. He wanted me to move the sidewalk, I had to move-
Who doesn't, who was the one-
I think somebody called in my office also and told they don't have a problem.
I thought we got a message, a mail message from somebody. I don't have a problem with this.
That's, well, we don't have to decide.
The road is taking a turn a little, but the sidewalk's coming straight. That's why it's fifteen inches long.
I think the thing is, when we go to town meeting, it's better to just get, you haven't done finished coat, have you?
No, I wanted to, but I missed it.
Oh.
Because of the rain.
Well, that's a lot of-
I wanted to, I wanted to do it, but this couple of months it been tough.
Tough, yeah, twenty something inches since August first.
Yeah.
All the payers are busy with the state. They couldn't cooperate with it.
Alright, so that's a good-
Every road is being paid this week.
And now lean on, get the whole-
Every road, like the expressways and everything like that.
It's getting, well, we got snow coming, so.
The asphalt post down still. But we have time for the thing anyhow till next year, so.
Yeah, I think we should change it. It's, it's not a big stretch. And you wouldn't even notice it if the bounds were not right at that point. But when someone drives down to do the inspection for the road acceptance, they're gonna see a bound in the middle of a sidewalk and say, well, that doesn't make sense, so.
You suggest that we say it's okay?
No, that we just correct it now.
Then we correct it.
And would get corrected by the springtime.
The one, one one which is fifteen inches, we can correct it in the spring and-
Yeah, the ones that are an inch or so, that's no big deal at all. It's that one that's inside the-
Okay.
Or you just move the sidewalk, not the bounds.
I cannot move the bond, I think.
Well, you're not supposed to.
Okay, are there any other issues then, besides the bounds?
The, the bounds and then the bond. We're okay with the bond, right?
The bond is here.
Yep.
And that's been-
I want a copy of that. Yep.
That's been done, right?
No, I think we have to. Um, so the form looked good, it was the same as the last. There was something on there that- Did you give it to someone else?
Actually, I had emailed, no, I had emailed Wayne, Wayne Amico about the fence.
Oh, that's a different thing, yes. Yeah, well, let's go to the bond, stick on the bond first. But, oh, was that the amount?
Yeah.
Was that a-
No, that's fine, let's stick on the bond.
Well, I'm just thinking, just so I don't get confused, but with the, the bond, the bond number in the first ti- uh, first paragraph, it talked about a site plan review instead of subdivision, and I wasn't sure why.
That was previously approved, that's how it's been going.
Okay, 'cause I thought it said subdivision on the previous, because I looked back on the previous one and I thought it said subdivision, but- Um, okay, so that was the only thing that I found. Was anything else? I don't remember, now, we talked about the, the last meeting.
Don't reduce the bond.
Someone's on their stuff.
So I think the format, if we're, if everyone looked at it and they're okay with the form, then you get it signed by your people and then we'll sign-
What happens is you sign it, I have to give it to my people.
Oh, it doesn't go the other way?
No. I have to say, it's a tri-party again, me, me and bank.
Yeah.
So you sign it, I sign it, because you approved it, then I sign it, and they, they are holding the bond anyhow.
Yes, yep.
It's a tri-party agreement.
Oh, and there was something else in there that we had to get the work done by a certain date, which was-
December thirty first, twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
This one says.
So that, that date got changed.
Yeah.
We nev- we never voted to extend the approval.
There's no approval on the road now. The road has been-
I know, that's the thing, it's-
Acceptance. Now, only we have is acceptance.
Is that this thing? No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The yellow one.
Highlighted one?
Yeah, so it says-
December thirty first, twenty nineteen.
Right, and the original one said December thirty first, two thousand seventeen. So, as long as we're okay with it, I mean, I think we're making progress, the people own the property, everything is going okay, but it's giving you two-year extension on the completion of the subdivision.
Right, and we have to issue a written amendment to the agreement?
No, I believe we need the order.
Right now, we just need to get this-
Ordered.
Right, we need, and we need-
If we sign this, do we need a notary?
Yes.
Looks like it.
Like tonight?
Yeah, but we bring it to, we can-
You need a notary? Oh, alright, good, we got one.
He cannot sign it.
I used to be, but no anymore.
Well, you need three, right?
If you, if not, notary, you're not a notary and a signer.
I employ one. But, but he's a leonarder, so you know.
And I can't, actually, I'm not supposed to.
So we'll leave you off here.
I refuse myself on all this, right, thank you.
Oh, so how many signatures do we need?
We need three.
Alright, so it'll be me, Paul and-
We sign it tonight, we have to be in the presence of a notary.
Notary.
You?
He's not here.
I cannot.
Oh, you can't?
No, you're not.
I cannot, I cannot sign it.
You'll sign it.
You don't need the notary, all you need is here. Your notary.
Well, we can, we could all-
Oh, we could, all three. We have three people here.
But we could all sign it.
Yeah.
Or you could all sign it, and then tomorrow we get it notarized with Elaine.
You can't do that.
Elaine is there.
You can't technically, you can't, you can't technically notarize something-
Oh, we didn't, you can't post notary.
Elaine is still there.
Without the person being there.
You have to be in her presence.
If you're present.
Yes.
Can you check Elaine is there? Still there, Elaine.
Wait, wait, you don't wanna do it, you don't-
Cheryl doesn't have it?
I have, Elaine, Elaine is still there.
Cheryl's not in the, should we have the name?
No, they are there in the town, town clerk's office.
Okay, well, it's, but I mean, I guess the issue, we don't have any issue with it. Extending it for two years, just, I mean,
It clearly wasn't, it clearly wasn't done in twenty seventeen, so.
And clearly it's not gonna be done by that date in twenty eighteen.
That's right, that's right.
So this-
Additionally, yes.
Additionally, so. Therefore, that sounds reasonable to me.
And that's not, like, 'cause we have the one for Century Drive that's been going on for twenty years. We don't want that happening here. But he's not in that same situation. We want to just get it done and then go from there. So you guys have to do that, I can't, because I'm recused.
You're recused.
Elaine maybe still here. They had a meeting.
Alright, in the meantime-
We can't vote on it, what do we? Why don't we just get that done, I mean, she'll be here, and if not, then we just have Raj notarized.
Okay. Do I hear any motions to approve this performance agreement? Bond reduction, agreements agreement.
Sir.
I'm going to approve this performance agreement.
Second. Second mark, second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
She's coming.
Recused, okay.
They gave me a gift when I went down.
Yeah.
Awesome. That's nice.
Nice.
So is she here?
She's coming.
She's coming?
Yeah. Well, she knows we're here, just get it signed and then she can-
Alright, and she sees us over here.
Look, here she is, she, we're in her presence, sign away.
This is the, this is the good copy.
Our signatures.
Not this, that's the real one.
An official copy, right?
It's, uh, the bond for his newer circle project. So it's just a tri-party agreement that needs to be notarized.
Okay. So we're just doing, see, she notar, the top one is in the notarization for all of our signatures.
Oh, plus she's gonna give you the real, real one.
I do, that's right.
See your evening hours, or-
She can write, she can write first.
I knew I had to be here tonight.
Do you wanna sign, since you're not a notary?
Yeah.
Did you vote for it?
Yes.
I like to see that signature everywhere.
That's signature, doesn't he?
Yeah.
It's a work of a-
It's a tough one.
I think the notary part is just, yeah, the next page.
Yes, we're just that one at the top, the cleaning, above name, planning board members.
Thank you, Elaine.
If you need to charge a fee.
Oh, no. Cleaning board members, yes?
It's on us. No fee? Ali, is it, no, no?
Anybody bring me, like, coffee or ice cream?
You want a butterfinger?
Ice cream, Hershey's or a bread.
For planning board.
A coke?
That wasn't ready. Still warming up.
Remember this date.
You should rename this time anyway.
Pardon me? Is there a backstory to that?
Just this first part.
Yep.
Yes.
And then they'll do the others.
Of, uh, blank, cleaning board.
Above name, planning board members, something inside.
Four of.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
I think we're good, you wanna check?
Okay.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thanks, Elaine.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
I'm signing a final copy of Elaine's letter to you. I have a quick question if the board has time for it.
Sure.
On Westland Circle.
Westland, okay. Okay, that was on Westland, that wasn't on newer, the fence?
No, no.
Okay.
This is Westland Circle, different. The fence was, uh, let's finish of no any, on the detention pond, the plan doesn't show fence.
On which, which project, Westland?
Newer.
Westland Circle.
No, 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 no.
Let's start, let's start over.
Newer Circle.
Okay.
There was supposed to be a fence on the detention pond. And the detention pond is not shallow, deep enough for a fence, that's why I think the engineer didn't put it, and the planning board approved it. Now, Wayne Amico is telling I had to do a fence, it's not on the plan.
You can put it on the asphalt.
We just wanna put an offense.
Put the fence and put it on the-
You can be on both sides, Raj, come on. Now, now, now I'm on this side. I'm on your side now, so you come down here now.
No, you said, no, it's not on the plan, you know.
It's not on the plan, means why should I do it?
Yeah, but we, we do need the-
If we approved it, I think, was anyone else on the board when that went through, Mark?
Vinnie was there, Marco was there, yeah, Marco was there.
I don't, I don't remember.
I know we've had discussions about detention basins and the idea of it, a detention basin fence can be chain link, as opposed to no chain link for screening ones. And it's the issue of, uh, with safety in a residential housing area.
Is it in the depth, or something like that?
Yeah, the depth, and also the slope.
And the steep, yeah.
If it's a steep slope going into it, we usually require a fence.
So if it's really not on the plan, the planning board approved it with no fence, and the engineer says you need a fence?
Well, he's making a point that the plan regulations say it needs a fence.
Eighteen inches is what he said?
More than eighteen inches deep.
And this is scheduled to be eighteen, the rise is eighteen inches?
Almost two feet, eight inches deep on one side, other side is three feet deep.
Like, right now? Like the water, or?
There will be no, water will be just sixteen inches.
Okay. 'Cause I think he was making his basis on the, the overflow pipe, or something like that?
That's sixteen inches.
Okay.
With the water height and hydraulic calculations. For the water to go over the spillway, it has to get above that level, so it's not just the-
No, there is a outlet pipe first.
I thought he was talking about the-
The spillway is above that.
Right, but I thought what he's, uh, and this was a while ago, he, he said something about the hydraulic calculation, said the water level in the pond-
For two hundred year, uh, storm. Two hundred year storm, it may go to over the spillway, but right now, the, there is outlet which is sixteen inches. You'll have standing water, worst situation, you'll have sixteen inches of water in the pond.
Which is, which is the rule, above, above eighteen, we need a fence?
Well, that's where, I thought that it was, probably.
Yeah, he just sent this out in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, I emailed him and he replied back, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm remembering, I'm not remembering anything off of the plane.
The basin appears to be three or more feet deep. The planning board requires a fence. But it's not the water depth, it's-
It's with the discharge level?
I'm thinking that if we didn't require it on the plan, we-
And Wayne was a reviewer on the plan too.
Yes, and I know I don't always, I don't always think we need it, 'cause sometimes the fence is an obstacle to the rescuer, someone to get in to help out. The kid's gonna climb over the fence, a parent is gonna have a tougher time getting over it.
At the same time, that is a smaller area with a lot of kids. So if you have no fence-
Was there a discussion about this, when it was approved?
I don't think so. I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't even remember whether detention pond is on that project.
Sixteen inches, even a pool can be, if it's less than four feet, you don't need a-
There are many small kids out there, uh, if you want to take the risk, you know.
It's not on the plan.
It's not on the plan.
Is there a note on the pan, the plan that children have to be protected? If that's not there either, then I guess we're off the hook.
It's not there.
Yeah, you should call it.
We should, yeah.
Oh, true.
Yeah, it's, well, I know we have a copy, I don't know where.
I have it.
No, but if he knows it's not on it, it's not gonna really do us much good. I think the issue is-
I mean, I think, in town, we, they are different, like, uh, some of the ones we've inspected had, have, like, I'm thinking over by Angel Brook. Some of theirs have fences, like the ones right near the houses.
Yeah.
And some of them don't, I mean, the ones that are further away down or around the road.
Yeah, but it, you know, Angel Brook, so they did ask for it, you know, the fence, the developer did put it down.
Sure that they, that was the reason.
On a, on a good faith, you know, he did put it down.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think the issue is that it's, at some point, we didn't require it, now we're changing it.
I don't remember if it was on the- Is that on the plan? Angel Brook, Angel Brook.
Oh, yeah.
It was on the plan.
Yeah, it's a cha- it's not a chain link fence, it's actually just a, a split rail fence.
Yeah.
So that might be-
In some places, and then there's a chain link in some other place.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, is there a middle ground where we put in a, a split rail fence? Like, um, you know, what a split rail, not a stocky- Just like two posts, two that go across.
Like a barn.
Yeah, like a farm.
Yeah, barboard, yeah.
I can do that.
Does that, with that, I mean, it's not gonna stop-
I don't think that that's as much of a safety thing, although it prevents kids from running right in, I mean, it sort of, like, keeps them honest.
It's like sixteen, sixteen inches deep, so.
To see pressure, you shouldn't go in there.
Yeah.
So I, I'm not sure, is there a middle ground we can take, or, it wasn't on the plan, so I'm not sure that, I think we can, just on safety reasons, but I don't know that we need to, and I think Wayne is pointing it out as a, a safety concern, 'cause that's his job, that's what he does.
Actually, Wayne didn't even pick that thing up, I had to put it in the bond, because my bond, I make the bond, so all my subdivision bond is same, all that we do is change the numbers. And it came through there.
So it was on the, it was on the form?
My secretary just puts in the numbers.
I mean, do, do you think it's, a split rail serves the purpose that we're trying to accomplish?
I think it defines the basin and lets people know there's something that might be dangerous on the other side, and that's-
It sort of prevents people from wandering through and dumping their leaves in it?
Well, that's a whole different story.
It's all their story, yeah.
I mean, the split rail would look nicer in the back of somebody's yard, you know, I mean, that's, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And it would prevent them from thinking that that's part of their yard, and the kids shouldn't run down there and-
So, what do you think, Raj, I think?
Well, my feeling is, you know, it's a safety hazard, but, you know, what are the-
What do you think about a split rail instead of chain link?
I don't know.
I mean, it's a fence, it's just, it's an easier to get through fence, I guess.
Yeah, there are a lot of kids in there.
Well, there are a lot of kids out there.
A lot of those. You are a, you are a developer, you know, you develop a lot of places, and how come you didn't put it on the, uh, put it on the drawings?
Well, you are not there, Raj.
Yeah?
You are not there.
No, leave out me, I'm not there, but you are a developer and you are developing so many properties.
You are a town planner, you are a selectman, and you are a EBA person.
Yes, I'm not saying nothing of that, you know.
Something, yeah, it gets all-
So, you know, that's, there are many, many kids-
That's why we're come, trying to come to a middle, middle item.
I think, you know, you should, you should do the right thing, do, do the right thing, you know.
And the right thing is a chain link or a split rail?
It, it doesn't-
Well, I think, when we, uh, we got that, we never responded back to-
I know it's a money you are looking for, but there are many kids, you know it, right?
It's not, it's a shallow pond, you haven't looked at it, that's why you're talking.
Yeah, but-
With the heavy rain also, you'll see.
Small tiny kids, and how much time it takes, shallow, or, you know, just water. Anyway.
More, no more than sixteen inches.
Think about this and review it and-
Well, I, we didn't respond to Wayne, we can ask him to kind of give us a little more, how much is the real standing water, just, just because the basin has a burn that's three feet high.
To Wayne. What is, have you been up there after all this rain? Have you been up there, like, today, after all the rain?
It doesn't go, because there's an outlet pipe sixteen inches above.
Yeah, the outlet works, yeah.
Then the spillway is for two hundred year storm, if you have the two year, two hundred year five storm, then it goes over the spillway.
Yeah, but it, like, today, it rained, whatever it rained over the last little while, it should be down to the discharge pipe now.
Three inches.
Oh, today?
Last, uh, last we, last week when we had the heavy rain, that three inches.
And then the next day, was it almost dry, or not?
It didn't go dry, it's all gravelly there.
Right behind the sand pit, so it's definitely going into the ground.
Let's, let's, I'll, we'll respond to Wayne Amico, anyone discuss this?
No problem.
And we'll change the subject.
Again?
Westland Circle.
Westland Circle.
I bought the property, I was, it was under agreement, we closed the deal.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Congratulations.
So we are starting the project.
With the permit that we approved?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Unless-
And you talked to Wayne to get the pre-construction meeting done?
That's why I emailed him, and I'm waiting for a call back, I'm going to cut the trees and he wants storm, uh, sweat. Sweat is ready.
Sweat, okay, yep.
I asked for the agreement, I had to give him a sweat.
And when will you start work, doing that?
Cutting trees will be sometime, uh, end of the week. There's a lot of trees there.
Are you just gonna clear it all out, or?
Do we?
The, I mean, the whole property, or just where the road is?
The road and the lots. Because there are a lot of grading there, because there is some ledge there.
Are you gonna, when they were in before, when we did the permit, they didn't know if they were gonna do the buildings? They were just gonna sell lots, they didn't know, are you gonna do, build the buildings too?
I'm, the business I'm here might as well finish it.
Yeah, so you're gonna, just like newer circle, it's gonna be a whole project?
So I, I mean, I think that's, it's all in one handle, I did get a call already, I talked to someone who was complaining about one of your vehicles went through, went off the property, went over someone's property bound, or something, just make sure that your contractors, everything is bright and visible.
Everything is pink there.
Okay. I had a complaint that he said that you, the contractor was on his property.
That gentleman who had called you? He comes to every department, every meeting and talks to everyone, but he doesn't like it.
The folks in that area are very concerned about this project, so you need to be sensitive to their needs, especially the woman who lives in the house.
Right next to the, right over.
On the left-hand side where your, you know, where her shed is and her fence.
No, I talk to them. What I do is, I usually go personally talk to those people, I talk to the, the gentleman on the left and right. He wanted me to clear more trees for him, so I told okay, I'll clear it. But the lagers are there anyhow, so. But he doesn't want the trees to go on his house, all the leaves and others, so he told me to clean it up, I agrees with it.
And that's sort of the idea, and then talking with the ones on, going in the ones on the left, when you have an idea where you're gonna put that house, just try to work with it.
She wanted some screen there.
To make sure there's screening between the two houses, as best you can do, doesn't, I mean-
If the house is gonna be close to her, she'll love the screening.
If you can pull it way back.
I think, you know, either it's close or a little further, you know, she just wants a screening.
Yeah, I think what her thing was, is if the houses are gonna be next door-
That's what I don't remember, but I don't-
She wants the screening next door, if the house is behind her, she wants the screening behind her.
The problem with that property is, it's a retention basin there, which gives you less choice about where to put the house.
Yeah. The retention basin is right, uh, next to that house. In between two new houses, there is a retention pond there. I'll work with them.
Is it, uh, you're gonna do the same scale of houses, newer circle, the same sizes?
Smaller, a little smaller. When was that, it's too big, too, too long to finish it, so I'll go on a smaller.
Okay, so if you didn't clear cut every tree from there, just a suggestion?
No, I had to clear cut everything.
These cuts and cuts and fills are pretty expensive.
They are about ten feet, ten feet of cuts and fills, so if I save it all, so those trees will die.
I, I'm sorry, okay.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright. No. Citizens might have come in, so, let me check for those first. Did we have new folks come in, Citizens for Citizens comments, or are you here for other business? Other business, okay. Amuji?
Want to wrap it up, Leonard? Alright, check.
That's quick.
That's quick. Did we decide last time who's gonna work on that?
We did, but he didn't do it.
Oh. That was a succinct response.
Well, let's see what the list looks like of things to do, but that needs to be done.
Okay.
He's required, he's working for it.
Right.
What am I going to get from the training?
Just saying we're okay with the modifications, we just need to draft the letter.
Just like for something that was formal, formally written.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Do we have templates for this?
Right.
Vinnie kept him, we'll work on it, we'll get it done before the next meeting.
We, right?
We.
Yeah. Which we, are we talking?
Well, it's a, yeah.
Not me.
The big we.
Not Mark.
You had a question?
Yeah, do we have templates for these kinds of things?
Generally, yes.
Fill in?
Are you volunteering to write this letter?
Not necessarily, without a template that is like.
Well, we have the old Amuji site plan approval, so all we have to do is amend that to change it, take out the parking lot.
Alright.
Do you wanna take a stab at it?
I, I don't know where it is, but I, I'm, I'm, yeah, it's, I'm sure it's in my email.
Can you, Melanie, can you email him, or no, I, I can probably email Sarah the Amuji email.
She doesn't do it quick, I won't have it.
That's right, maybe I shouldn't volunteer.
Get it done quickly, that's good.
Right, okay. The Village Center zoning update.
Before I forget, are we, is there definitely going to be a meeting on the twenty six, no, you know, no.
No. Uh, we got a lot of new information from CMRPC, nice new fancy drawings, um, did they submit any revised wording about the things reflecting the, uh, input from the public meetings we've had? Or just the drawings?
I thought there was some narrative to it.
Okay, the, yeah, the deal is we heard a lot of input from people at the last two meetings, and there's no point in having another meeting if we come with the same exact information, it's no point, so, no, the twenty six is too soon.
Yeah, it's a site plan, I found a drawing.
Oh, right, that's right, a big accident, can I just slap that onto the original letter and say amended as shown?
That's a classic mark. I think that should be.
Really nice picture.
That's a classic.
Keep it moving.
Yeah, okay, so do you want, what do you want to review about the Village Center zoning?
I think that's good, I, I agree, we got a bunch of stuff, uh, we lost the Elizabeth, she's moved on from CMRPC, right?
Oh, she has?
Yep.
What?
Yeah.
She's only been there for like a year.
Well.
Okay.
And, but E I is still working on it, he, he responded to us quickly and gave us, he sent it to everybody, I think, right?
I received it.
The updated, uh, plan of the area with showing current use, uh, current zoning, all separate plans, but it's something for us to be able to look at and work with. There was one, uh, back two years ago when this started, I think the CMRPC person pulled together a list of what was a zoning violation, like a percent, do you remember this, Mark? That it was a percentage of how many that didn't meet the frontage or didn't meet the area, or.
And it was astonishingly high, I think?
Yeah, things were high, right.
It was in one of the reports, though, isn't, like, one of the reports that had the pictures, um.
Well, he said he couldn't find it, and I wasn't sure if, I didn't find it in my area, in my pile of this stuff, I wasn't sure if you might be able to.
Nah, if it's on an email, I don't know if I'll find it.
So I went to, yeah, I, I sent an email out asking if anyone else had it.
No, I mean, I have to look through the old emails of the stuff that, I forget the guy, who was the guy that did the walk with us?
Chris Ryan, is that?
Was it Chris Ryan? Yeah, I think so.
Sounds like one of the names, but it's been.
I mean, I'd have to look through, look up his email, 'cause he sent out that, it was a nice report with, with that sort of stuff in it.
But it'd be, it'd be interesting if you wanna propose saying, hey, we're gonna, we're proposing this to get people into compliance, and here's the high non-compliance that we currently have.
Right, and I think that was some of the intent on our end, it just hasn't come through in the draft right now.
You can't look on your DOS computer, Mark?
What?
Your DOS computer?
He's got the DOS computer, I've got Windows for word groups.
Okay, so we wanna sort of look at that in our, in our spare time?
Put that on our next agenda, yeah, I'll send something out.
Okay, alright.
And if people have comments, he sent a narrative in his email yesterday or the day before, so the updated wording, if people could look at it and get comments to me in the next couple of days, if possible, and then I can incorporate those into a document for the whole board to review.
Okay.
So I'm only gonna put it on our agenda for next time, um, I had an action item for number four and didn't do it, so I think we can just move ahead. Holy cross, I was supposed to send the guy, was it, I was supposed to send the guy a letter about.
Email.
Yeah, a le, email about, hey, where's your ASBIL?
Well, we're looking for the ASBIL, the site plan ASBIL, but we're also, what's the deal on the parking?
Oh, the parking?
That was the big question.
Oh, the parking was the question?
The ASBIL, I think.
Where people are parking, where people are parking all over creation.
Right, when they only, they said they were gonna be.
Unintended, since it's all across. Yep.
That was good.
Sorry.
So the approval only had, I think, twenty-two parking spaces, because they were gonna be bringing everybody in by van or by bus.
Yes, 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 yes.
It just happened that during the inspection, they found a whole lot more parking.
Yes, understand, okay, police station closeout update, number five.
We haven't gotten an ASBIL, or what's the, what's the deal on that?
I think another, uh, I was at the last fist meeting, the thing came out and, uh, you know. If I remember, well, remember, you know, they said, you know, they, instead of putting it on the plan, they will give it a one-page narrative of what happened, we were there. So that's one of the things we agreed to, right?
About the fence?
About the fence.
I don't know that we.
Or you want the panel, you want that.
We didn't, they, we haven't agreed to anything, I don't think, yeah, we, we were looking for it to include in the site plan review.
Yeah, no, you are discussing, you are discussing that.
Yeah.
So you s, you said, you know, either it's on the plan, or, you know, give it in writing. That's what I remember, okay, you remember everything?
Right.
I don't know.
This was here, I don't know.
Well, I'm just thinking that we just need to get something.
Since it, yeah, since it wasn't, yeah, since it wasn't on the plan.
Yeah, they've got it. So they are, yeah, they will do it, yeah, they said they will do it, yeah.
Okay, and actually add it to the record?
Yeah, they said they will do it.
Alright.
And it's gonna, they're only gonna describe where it's located.
I don't know, by writing it, you know, the, the fence is three hundred and sixty degrees towards this side, four hundred and sixty degrees to that side, I don't.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure how it.
Three point four miles from this side.
They could.
Yeah, so make something to see how it works, I mean, the idea is we wanna know that it's a site plan and ASBIL, so it's, this fence was constructed here, and the town either has an reason for it or doesn't have an reason.
But they, you know, that's, they said, no, it's not a town fence, so we'll be giving it to the.
But the fence was required as part of the site plan review, it doesn't really matter who owns it.
We had a discussion about this last time, but who's responsible for maintaining the fence, the person whose property it now is on?
Cause it was part of the podcast.
Well, I don't think that was pertinent to what they were trying to get to, I think that the point was that the reason for the fence is the project, so that's why it should be on the drawing.
That's fine.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's spurred it, it's part of the requirement for the shield screening.
Okay, so can they, can they submit a supplemental simple drawing about where the fence is? To describe where the fence is?
Anything, just to include the fence in the project, I mean, I guess we'll, we're flexible.
Yes.
I just don't wanna, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't want it, it to appear that it's out of compliance, because it doesn't have the screening, when really it is there, if anybody asks.
Right, they did do it.
Yes. So, a letter would be wonderful.
Or a note, or, I mean, just the minimum that they can, you know, afford to do.
Identify the fence where it is.
Just scribble it in, yeah.
Sure, or have Mark, conduct like Mark.
If you want me to do it again, if they can put it on a quick share, I can edit it.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Um, oh, the engineering services update.
That's the, did people have a chance to review the policy? I didn't really, so I.
Is this, is this considered a selectment?
Nope, I think that's stopped, because if we get this policy in place, is what she's trying to get, is consultant.
I did, I did not review it, T L D R.
I did look at it, but I don't remember what it said, sorry.
It just talked about the, we've already got a fee schedule, that has a lot of the information, already talking about our consultants.
Yep.
And what they charge, and why we use them, and the legal gobbledygook of when we use them.
Yep. Yep.
Um, we need a policy, 'cause we don't have a policy, we actually did it all in a fee schedule, so it all is kind of one document.
Okay.
Town council, 'cause the law changed last February, I think it was.
Okay.
And we've been talking about putting together a rules policy, or a rule or something, 'cause it's, whatever the front page of what she had was, it said rules, I think.
Yep, the following rules are adopted, yes, yes.
Right, so, so we need to just review those rules and make sure that it makes sense, and then we could just vote on it at our next meeting.
Is this a new document?
Yes, this is a new document.
Brand new document.
Taking, right, 'cause the next part.
Did they vote for it?
They, she pulled parts of the, uh, law, and as well as parts of our, if you go back three more pages, the planning board fee schedule.
Okay.
The information in that fee schedule, um.
So she combined existing information into this document?
Well, she incorporated the stuff that we had already included here, left it in that fee schedule.
Yes, yes. Yes.
But also put together it as a policy, which I guess we have to act on it as a policy.
Okay. Okay, so our ac, our action would be to review this and take a look at things, and then next we would vote on.
Yep, and. Vote on it at our next meeting, be prepared to make edits and vote on it at the next meeting.
Everybody hear that?
Yeah.
And have everybody look at the fee schedule, 'cause I changed the fees.
Alright.
I lowered the fees for the formas, which is normally families and residents coming in to try to just change their lot lines, and so I dropped it a hundred dollars anyway, from three hundred to two hundred.
Okay.
Um, and then I went back and looked at some of our, 'cause we were looking at the fees for subdivisions and other site plan reviews, so I brought those up another ten or fifteen percent.
Those are reflected in this?
In this.
In this version?
Formas a, uh, can I get the approval? Wouldn't, you used to, so all you changed was the filing fee from one, two hundred to one hundred?
I think so.
Okay.
I know I dropped it by a hundred, so I don't know.
Yeah, but two hundred is not a high fee, right, or you are decreasing it?
Well, 'cause it's usually homeowners doing the.
Yeah, but, you know, two hundred is a very nominal fee, right?
Well.
Yeah, they are doing a project like five hun, five, five hundred thousand dollar house.
Right, but.
No, not for an A and R.
But for an A and R, we have to ju, we have to justify our fees.
They divide the house, they divide the property.
And then they sell the, buy the A and R house.
They sell this the next day morning. That was.
Well, let's discuss that, let's discuss that next time.
Yeah, we'll discuss that next time.
Okay, so we'll review, we'll all review it and vote on it next time.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Is the discount copying fee still the same?
Yeah.
Oh, I gotta make sure that's not in there.
Please.
Please.
Alright, so we have.
I'll work on my computer.
All the fees.
We have the variances to.
We didn't change anything, yeah.
We have the variances to discuss at Wilden Street.
Do we wanna?
Well, this may take some time.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, do we wanna get people?
We could change, we could, this is gonna take some time.
Eight, it's seven forty. It's seven forty, there are some other market.
But we also have, we have items seven and eight.
So can we go back later?
We could.
It's seven forty.
I mean, these, sev, uh, items seven and eight don't require other people here, so we'll skip to, so it's seven forty, so we'll skip to Andrew.
That sounds good.
Yes, seven forty.
Thanks.
Did you get your document displayed on there?
No, wonky, wonky internet connection.
Really, between you and that?
Yeah, yeah.
You have to change your router to whatever the.
I did, I did.
Bookshare router.
Yeah, I tried, yeah, it, it didn't work, it didn't work.
Okay, alright.
Didn't work, it's the, it's the same presentation, I mean, to give at the community outreach meeting.
Okay, so.
Okay, so, yes, I wanted, I wanted to come here, so I spoke, I spoke to Paul Ready, and thank you Melanie for setting up, so I reached out because I have contract with the property in West Boylston for a non-retail marijuana establishment. Obviously, it's early on in the process, so I wanted to come out, introduce myself, get any feedback, thoughts, knowledge, et cetera, um, so that's, that's where we are currently. Um, the first, the next step that we are doing, in addition to like contractors and renovation, all that type of planning, is the community outreach meeting.
Right.
Um, by, by state law, I believe it's two hundred feet, any butter within two hundred feet, we'll send a notice to, and we'll have a public meeting, and then we'll speak about it, we'll hear what they say, so you guys will also hear about that. Notify the, the town, town manager and all the type of people.
And that's worked through the selectmen, or is that, how, who's that worked through to get that, that meeting, community meeting?
Don't you have to go through the application process with the town?
Okay, so a few, so a few questions there, so the, so the, so the, so the.
This is, this is all new to us also, it's all new to everybody, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I can, yeah, 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 so let's, let's answer one at a time, 'cause they're very different questions, um, just remember your question, then I can answer this one, and then we'll get to that one.
Yeah.
Um, the first question was, do you have to go through the selectmen in order to make the meeting, um, what they ask, what they, I'm willing to go through any department to make the meeting, what they ask us to do, or what's said in the regulations to do, is to create the meeting, give at least seven days' notice, and post it in a public circulation. In addition to the, in addition to that, we send it out to the town manager, I'll tell you about it, too.
And butters get notified?
Butters for sure get notified, they get, they get personally notified, I believe it's two hundred feet, I'm ninety-five percent sure it's two hundred feet.
I see people checking their hip.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it could, yeah, could be, could be, yeah, could be three hundred feet.
Where's Mark, working his magic?
Oh, that's the spot, it's, it's near Angel Brook, just if anybody wants to know where the track tracks.
Yeah, now this is, this is a building that's currently vacant, right?
It's got a gym, it's, so it's not vacant, it has.
It's not vacant.
It's not vacant, it's not used, it's not extremely busy.
It looks, it looks vacant.
Correct.
It appears to be vacant.
Correct.
Oh, wait, so this is right at the railroad tracks.
Prison, prison is down there, West Street Community.
Say again? I was thinking it was back at Hartwell Street, no, this is.
No, this is, it's, it's next to the solar panels.
Counting correction.
Correct, directly next to solar panels.
It's the next property north on the same side of the street as the solar panels.
Okay.
Ultimatum Drive is the corner.
Yep, yep, that makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay.
So, you are on the subcommittee, right?
Yes.
So I'm on the subcommittee.
Okay.
So, last, during the last subcommittee meetings or the select board meetings.
Mm-hmm.
We talked about, uh, whether going through this approval process through the application, uh, or of queue process, so are you aware of that? And then, you know, if it is, so do we have to, the town has to approve your app, application in order for you to go through the, uh.
To the state?
Huh?
To the state?
Not to the state, uh, community outreach.
Okay.
Has to approve?
The, he, there are, there are many applicants are, are going to be applying for the town, right? So the town, we, the subcommittee will be.
This is, this is not, this is not, this is not retail.
This is unlimited.
What is this?
It's not a retail station.
This is the medical?
No.
No, cultivation.
Just non, non, non-retail.
This is for cultivation?
Cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution, they call transport.
So there's no, there's a beginning, we're only allowing two retail establishments.
So there would be no.
So there's no limit.
Right.
So those, for those, you have to get in line.
Right.
I got it.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be a concern.
This is non-retail, even you guys won't be allowed in, sorry.
Okay, alright, so.
But, um, does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, one second, one.
Go ahead.
When it comes to the manufacturing, that Board of Health involves, what kind of manufacturing will be doing?
Oof, I gotta ask the contractor.
Yep.
Yeah, 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 I have, I have, I have, I have just contracted, I have, I'm not starting.
If you are. If you are making brownies, cupcakes over there, you know, yes, the Board of, Board of Health will be involved.
If there's a kitchen of some sort involved, they're making food items, then there needs to be, the Board of Health needs to be involved.
Okay.
I assume that's the manufacturing.
Is there, is Board of Health for town of West Boylston?
Or else?
Okay, okay.
They do have a set of regulations.
Like, like any? Like any food manufacturing?
Actually, I think they have a meeting tonight.
Yeah, and they, they have those regulations also in the marijuana regulations, too.
That's nothing special about a marijuana establishment, those are just general food preparation.
Correct. Correct, and they, they reference. They reference those all the time.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So the order of things is always for, for this.
I think, you know, you need to go before the, you know, like, we had the meetings.
Yes.
Farmer meeting, the select board, the subcommittee before the town.
Those we've had with Anita upstairs, you mean?
Yeah, I would suggest you to contact the town admin.
Okay.
Ask for a, you know, inform, form, informal meeting.
With the select, with the selectmen?
Not, not the selectmen, the subcommittee.
There's a, yeah, with representatives from the planning boards, Board of Selectmen, uh, town managers.
Except for health will be there, uh, 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 will be there.
Yeah.
Campolis?
No.
I don't think they come to that meeting.
Okay.
A general discussion about what's required and in what order, and.
So this one is.
That gets all the town boards sort of on the same page.
We're calling this the subcommittee.
But the adult use, adult use marijuana.
There's an adult use.
Yeah.
Subcommittee.
Yep.
And, yes, this is the first time, you know, we are hearing anything about this kind of, uh, cultivation.
For sure. Yeah.
What's your truck traffic, is that what we're, you here just for the marijuana stuff, or?
Yes, so.
I don't know anything about marijuana, I just do the site plan.
Yeah, sure, so, so basically, as a non-retail establishment, anything coming in or out has to be, has to be vehicle tracked twenty, twenty-four seven, so the only traffic's just personal vehicles?
Or the, I mean, I assume you're gonna have some business things, you're gonna move stuff in and out.
Yeah, so that's what I mean by personal vehicles.
How much traffic?
How much traffic, it'd probably be two trucks twice a day.
Yeah, and he's, and he's in industrial area, I mean, I don't think.
Yeah, no, I was thinking it was fine, and actually, I was kinda hoping it was up north, farther north on Hartwell Street, 'cause we have talked multiple times about doing some work to improve Hartwell Street all the way down to one forty, so you don't have to go up and around.
Right.
That would be a nice, if you had a whole bunch of truck traffic, if like, we had FedEx going in there, not like we want it, but.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
If there was a big traffic requirement, we would have to just improve that road down to Route one forty and out, so it doesn't go through the residential section of Shrewsbury Street.
Gotcha.
Or Maple Street, I guess it is, and, and those areas, so, but it looks like two trucks is not gonna.
Right.
But again, you know, those, again, you know, those trucks will be very discreet, there won't be any.
Correct, and they're also, they're also gonna be pretty small, like.
And only two. Or what they look like, I'm not gonna be sixteen weeks.
They're not gonna notice that at all compared to the trash trucks that are cruising up and down that same street.
Right.
Forty of them in the morning, I mean.
And it may be too early, you know, we said, we said for the trash, trash, junk trucks, you know, they cannot go through the Shrewsbury Street to Maple Street.
Eighteen.
There was a requirement.
The same, same thing goes on the other side.
Of cultivation, right.
Yeah.
So, uh, will there be additional buildings?
No, oh, so, so we're, we're looking into, we're not positive, the cultivation that we want to, good question, the cultivation we wanna look into is greenhouse.
Yeah.
So we put them right, right off the back of the building.
Yeah, off the back of the building, yeah.
Not positive if it can be done, but that is, that's the thought for that.
Yeah. And the current occupant who, uh, who lightly uses the building is moving out, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you're gonna take the whole building?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's for the manufacturing part?
Correct. Hold on, what, what's for the manuf-
The current building.
The current building is for the manufacturing and stor- and storage and the vehicles and that type of stuff.
So.
And the manufacturing, I should actually add, the manufacturing, it's, it's basically a medical lab, we take a raw plant and then we extract out cannabinoids.
Yeah.
So, just to kinda get like a feel for what the manufacturing is, not like heavy manufacturing.
No, so you're not creating, I don't know, smoking, whatever things.
Correct, you're correct, it's, it's, correct, it's all, it's all completely self-contained in pharmaceutical grade machines.
So you get the, the marijuana from some other place and then you extract over there?
Correct, or, or from our own greenhouses theoretically.
Okay.
So both, both, both options.
So how, it's gonna be like a gr- a glass greenhouse, you're not gonna do?
We're gonna.
Little lights?
So, yeah, so most likely we will do what's called light deprivation. Light deprivation is when you mix lighting with the sun, so that way you can get more turns per year.
Yeah.
Um, but it would, but the sides would all be opaque, that way you can't see through any of them.
And secure, I mean.
Correct, correct, secure fencing, fencing, all that type of stuff.
That's, that's in the bylaws.
Wasn't there something, when you start using growing lights, wasn't the, uh, the light plant wanted to be involved in the discussion?
No, they, they have more than.
Power is, it's gotta, it's gotta be as green as possible.
Yeah, for sure, and there's also a ma- there's also a maximum wattage per square foot, using a lighthouse, using a, we'll be well under those, first off, we can talk to them, no problem.
Yeah.
We'll be well under their thoughts of how much energy it would take because in doing a greenhouse, if you're doing it indoors, yeah, we'd run into that exact maximum right there.
Okay, alright, okay.
So please call Anita.
I think, you know, that's the first step you need to do.
Who's Anita?
Town admin.
Town administrator.
Thank you.
I need a shepherd.
You guys have a meeting tomorrow night?
We do have a meeting tomorrow night.
To go over how this process works.
That's a whole different thing.
So you wouldn't wanna.
A whole different.
Not listen to something.
Okay.
Planning boards only when they take stuff the same day. Planning boards only when they take stuff the same days.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought we were signing papers tonight.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you had your drawing, we could sign it, I mean, I don't know what.
Hold up, yes. Can I pose a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Can you tell us more about the company? Is this a new company, is it established company?
Yeah, good question.
I understand.
Actually, can we just get your name, I?
Yes, Rush Live, one twenty-five Lee Street.
Yeah, so, so we, we currently operate in Maine as, as a medical company. Up in Maine, the laws are much, much different than they are here. Um, up in Maine, we can have a maximum of thirty, thirty plants, so up in Maine, we have an indoor grow and we also have a manufacturing facility. Uh, when we say manufacturing, it's basically taking any type of plant and then turning into, into a non-plant product. So that's currently what we do.
What's thirty plants look like?
Thirty plants looks like twice the size of this room. Maybe, actually, one, one and a half, so, one and a half.
Really?
Small or large?
That seems like you could get more plants in there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, yeah, that's.
I guess my college friends weren't that good at it.
Well, the college friends also had to hide it.
That's true.
So, and their closets probably weren't that big, right?
Does there a particular benefit to opening here rather than expanding in Maine? Is there a local market to try to serve?
Uh, yeah, so, 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 so the reason why is cause there's no interstate trade. So whatever we produce in the state of Maine must stay in the state of Maine, whatever we produce in the state of Massachusetts, stays in the state of Massachusetts, even though both are legal. And let's say, as of right now, let's say New Hampshire legalized it, Maine legalized it, uh, Massachusetts legalized it, I believe down ninety-five, those would be all, it would be like completely, it's called like a legal highway, we still couldn't transport it, even though it was in all legal states.
And as far as employment, are you looking to hire people, how?
Yeah, so, yes, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna hire people, we're gonna, that we're gonna look to hire people locally first. Um, so there's basically, so we have, in this, in this property, we're gonna be hiring about twenty people, um, we're gonna look locally first for sure. Um, it's gonna be everything from, from.
Usher.
Part time, yeah.
Okay, that's. An admin or two to a, to a chemist level, so everything from at entry level to, to expert level, um, what else? Uh, we will.
Drivers?
Yeah.
You have dri- yeah, and, yeah, there's a, there's everything, yeah, it's everything. Um, we will, we'll gi- we'll give back to the town, so there'll be, we're gonna look into what nonprofits are in the town, um, just to give back to the town specifically. We'll also, we'll also give, like, the time for impact fees, so any types of impact that we have, whether, so for one of the things, like, part of the regulations, we're gonna have a direct line to the police office, like, there's like, there's different things that have to be, have to be done with the police office, they're gonna be spending extra time and resources doing that, that's relevant, so.
As, as far as the fire department, don't they need to get special suits to be able to accommodate, let's say there's a fire and they have to go in?
Hmm.
I don't think they.
I haven't, I haven't heard that.
The cannabis, cannabis control commission, they have a very strict regulations on that. You know, how much security, what kind of the buildings, all those.
But in terms of, doesn't the fire department need a heads up so they can buy the equipment and the suits?
Yeah.
Fire, when I say police, fire, fire is, fires also, I'm, we have to look in the regulations to see if there's a direct connection to fire, but I would not be surprised.
And is the town responsible for purchasing any extra fire? Fire equipment? You're talking about suits, special suits, would the, would the town be responsible for?
No, yeah, not buying anything.
No, but I think that's part of the, the fee for services, that kind of thing, right?
That's a, that's a three percent.
Yeah.
So that comes as part of what you can charge.
Right, but the town is responsible, where we direct the three percent fee, it's something that's out.
Right. In other words, that equipment would live at the fire department?
Yes, yeah, it would be their equipment.
I mean, I don't, I, I, I assume that's why.
Yes.
We're in law.
Yeah.
We're in law, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You said, you said that you'd occupy in that whole building, does that mean the gym's moving out of there?
Actually, I guess the gym is next door. The gym is in the building, uh, that's right on the train.
Gym is next door.
That building that I'm thinking of, that's right there by the road, John.
The gym is the one with the gym, but they're next door, they're the next one down.
One more.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, that's great. So Anita Shepherd, you got her name?
And subcommittee, adult use subcommittee?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just, yeah.
No, just to tell her, you know, you, your intention, then she will.
And she'll, she'll know what to do.
And what's your timeframe? I mean, I don't, I have no idea how long the whole state stuff is, but just to include, site, it's gonna need a site plan review.
It takes a while.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
Right, but if a site, site plan review, plan a month and a half to two months.
Okay.
For, for going to the planning board and getting approval for site plan changes.
So basically, to do our community outreach meeting, we'll do that in, in two weeks, hopefully barring nothing unforeseen. Then after we do that, then we would do a, I believe, a community host agreement. Then after that, I believe that there would be a site plan review, so I would call that a total of four, six months, but.
Okay.
That sounds right.
Um, if you wanna come in with a preliminary?
Yeah.
Next summer, initially be starting, I guess.
Yeah, but if you wanna come in with a preliminary and say, okay, well, this is what we've got as a schematic of what we're thinking about, what more might I need, what, what I should ask? We have a whole bunch of variances that you might wanna ask for, so you don't, don't pay your engineer, your designer, to do a whole traffic study with ten traffic vehicle trips per day. So you won't need to do that, so that's an easy waiver that we would grant, but there may be some other things that don't really apply that could save you guys time and money.
And I sent you the bylaws, right?
Yes, yes.
So you had those, okay.
I did have one concern about how, you're a tenant or you're buying the building?
Ten.
How do we do that with the owner? Do, do we need the owner involved, or is the tenant able to make the decisions about the building?
Well, for the planning board, we need a, something in paper saying the tenant has the authority or the justification, whatever it might be, that.
The power to make these decisions.
These things will happen.
Part of the application.
Would a special permit that you issue would not go to the owner and not the, not the tenant?
The, good question, I mean.
Can I?
Um, and for.
These are the things that I hang out to.
The applicant.
This is gonna get more complicated, not, there, there's another applicant who's in the mall over here, so he's one tenant, you know, so I don't know how we do it there too, you know? Cause then it's just a change of use, cause he's not really changing the place.
I mean, the answer to this would be the same answer we give to anyone who's doing a site plan review.
To business, that, right?
Who's.
Like a tenant in a part of the.
Yeah, there's nothing special about that particularly.
Correct, they need to show that they have authority to make whatever changes are required to be made.
Okay, there's, there's sort of, who gets that permit?
I think, I think it would make more sense that the, that the business would get the permit.
Yep.
Apparently that's how it works.
Yeah, I didn't know how the business and owner are related, I guess, so you would get the permit, but then you couldn't do anything, you couldn't move the permit.
Correct.
You can't move the permit, you can't move the permit.
So you're kinda stuck with it, and you kinda can't sell the permit, I mean, it's sort of just yours.
The permits is.
Yeah, it's just for you, someone else wants to do it.
And you can't transfer it.
You can't, you can't transfer it, you can't sell, if you sell the business, they'd have to come back through, it would probably be an abridged process because everything's done, but.
Okay.
Right, yeah, no, right, but the work has to be done, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, cool, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions, give us a call. Um, Paul Linars, Linkarski?
Yes.
About Holt Street.
Mm-hmm.
What's going on on Holt Street?
Not much.
Okay.
I'm gonna be quick.
Alright.
That means I'm gonna be quick. How you doing, I'm Paul Linkarski?
Great first name, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. So let me turn this plan toward you people. And make it as less confusing as possible here. So, we own the Causeway Crossing Mall, Joy Lee's.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
On this corner right here. So, uh, Route twelve Sterling Street.
Mm-hmm.
So the property in yellow is us, and this is the Causeway Mall, this is the MDC building, garage, right here.
I know, well.
Yep.
Country cattle and stuff like that's a little.
Country cattle.
Over here, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. So, this is me in partnership, I live here, there's four townhouses, so I live here. But the property in red is owned by us, Windermere Estates. And then, by the way, this property extends out here off the plan. So this was done way back when the regulations were twenty thousand square feet per unit at the time. And I understand today, if you have sewers, it's ten.
Yeah, it's twenty thousand without ten width.
Yeah, correct.
Is there sewer there, though?
Well, there will be, we have a sewer connection here.
Right, but isn't this outside the sewer district?
Um.
That's the thing that I was looking at, cause you emailed this to the board and I was thinking about it, is that to expand the sewer district, you have to get permission from the selectmen?
So we did, we got permission from the sewer commissioner.
Sewer commission? When did you get that, recently or?
Um, we got a verbal approval, they want us to send a letter for the request, so we met with them.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah.
So then.
But, but there is a.
It does have sewer.
There's a sewer connection here dedicated for this here already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, in doing so, we own this property also, here, we own, this is twenty Holt. So if you come up Holt Street and you go beyond the townhouses, then we have a little ranch house here.
Okay, that's all.
So what we'll be doing is, after putting the sewer line in, we would like to come back with a plan, and that the board endorses that, now it's reduced to the ten thousand square feet. And then, we in the yellow, Paul and Sue, will repurchase in the remaining land.
What do you say, everything is yours?
Hmm?
And connecting all your property.
Yes, correct, yeah. Cause we have all the frontage.
Okay, so then, so you'll have a sewer connection that comes up to here.
Correct.
And then this lot would only have to be forty thousand square feet?
Uh, four, correct, yeah, it's eighty now.
Okay, so then you draw your line wherever you draw your line.
Correct, yeah.
Where's the zoning line for multifamily?
Well, the zoning line is three hundred, um, and then, uh, ten percent, so three hundred and thirty feet. The zoning line is running back here and it's taken, uh, part of this property here, and then it runs, run, it somewhat runs like this.
Okay.
And that's based off of, uh, Route twelve?
Route twelve, correct, yeah.
Okay.
So a portion of this lot is in the, uh, business zone as well.
Yeah.
A small portion.
But the rest is what?
Oh, this would be single residence.
So where, are you proposing to put housing in there? Cause if it's.
Well, what we're, what we're looking at is, um, what can we do here, and, so I've been researching the, um, this, the housing plant production program. I don't understand a lot of it, and that was my second question here for the board, I didn't know if the board was, um, up to speed on it, what's happening. We would like to do something with this property because of its location. Um, it's surrounded by business property, there is residential back here, but as you can see, what we did here was a, was a real nice, uh, mix for everything. So, we would like to do something, I would like to, um, pursue this program if, um, if it's, um, becomes eligible or what have you. Um, we, we, we still are gonna do this, um, no matter what, but we, we wanna pursue this later on, we would like to see what's gonna happen with this.
Makes sense.
So what is the board, um, without jumping ahead?
Yeah.
Um, what is happening with this, uh, initiative here in, in town?
Uh, that's, has that been approved and submitted?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's submitted.
The housing production plan?
Yes, yes.
Submitted.
Yeah.
And it's been submitted to the state?
Submitted to the state, I don't think they, they still have time.
We had a presentation on that, uh, a month and, month, month and a half ago.
Okay.
Uh, the folks who prepared that came in and presented that to us, we were not directly involved in the production of that.
Okay.
Uh, that document.
Okay, so then, um, the, the, um, approval will come from the state. And, um, will this come back with, um, regulations that, um, the town, um, will work out with, say, developers like us? Um, for programs, is that, is that what this is about?
So plan, Mark, for the housing, housing partnership?
How does, yeah, how does that, how does that plan translate into, into, into actual regulations or?
It doesn't, it's, it's the plan though, and it sort of, I think the point of getting it is it sort of gives us some relief on ZBA, oh, sorry, not ZBA, uh, forty B.
Zoning?
Uh, projects coming in, because if we're on track, we have a little more leeway to deny for unfriendly forty Bs or something like that, that's, that's really.
So.
What that's about, yeah.
So you're looking at having some affordable housing content there?
Well, what we would like to do is do this concept, what we did here was we built four units, I occupied one, and the other three people were townspeople, um, of retirement age. And so, we would like to do the same thing, something similar, um, that would be in, um, in affordable range for, uh, local people that are in retirement age that wanna stay in town. This is not a big project.
Yeah.
You know, this is, this is only four units here, so this is not a big, this is nothing compared to like what would be a forty B or anything.
We just wanna propose something that's comfortable with the neighborhood, but that might work with this plan here, and we, and we, I'm not up to speed on this here, I don't know what's happening here.
But, I guess I would put it this way, if we came in today and we said, we'd like to duplicate this here, what would, what would be the board's flavor on it, what's, um? Do we know enough, and I, I don't wanna put this out.
It's a, it's a great question.
It's a good, good question.
He's brought up the zoning line from the town map, so it looks like the zone line comes kind of almost through here, which is fine, you get that thirty foot extension on it, so you're fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, which is good. The bump in the road here is that this is single residence, so you can't put multifamily on it, unless something changes.
Correct. Yeah, correct. It is.
In here, it talks about making small developments happen and changing the zoning or changing the requirements to, it could be a forty B, but a friendly forty B. So, there's gotta be some way, right now, you're not allowed to put multifamily housing on that section. The only way to make it happen is to get some forty B project.
We don't wanna do that.
Yeah, well, you could do a forty B, but it doesn't have to be angry, it doesn't have to be.
It's just a, it's just a way, way to get permits, it's really, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, no, we've done a forty B, and we have, but.
Did that with the ones over on Heritage Lane, one ten?
Right. Right.
Hundred years ago?
Yeah, 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 you're right, yeah, 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 almost.
A while ago.
No, we would, we would prefer to stay away from that, we, we think this is, um, something completely different. Um, that this, this here, I read it, um, I don't fully understand it, but this here seems to be something that we all wanna wrap our arms around. Um, it seems to be.
Right.
I don't know.
So there's a forty B option, but then there's also a LIP, the local initiative petition.
I mean, it, it's, it's either way, but I don't think you can still get, I don't think the LIP would let you do the.
I don't, that's, I don't know, but, I like the idea, though, I mean, if there's some way to legally make it happen, that makes sense, but.
Where the, where the town gets credit for having such. Where the, where the town gets credit for having such housing.
Yeah, beyond the SHI.
That's, that's the idea.
Right.
Cause I've heard great things, a couple of your tenants have talked to me, friends of mine are like, oh yeah, it's a great landlord, everything works out well. So I think it's gonna be run well, it'll be good. And the idea that it's not allowed now is just what has to get overcome. And the way to overcome it is to use what they've talked about there for the smaller development projects. And a local initiative petition, um, working with a housing authority? I mean, with the housing partnership?
The housing trust.
I'm sorry, right, the housing trust.
But, but we're not a, we don't give up any permits, so we can just help you.
No, but you've got a consultant that kinda knows.
Yeah, we, we have a consultant that can help get this through, but you'd still have to get the permits through forty B or LIP or whatever. I mean, we, we don't, there's no way.
Do we know that yet though on this here? Do we, are we still waiting? Are we still waiting to hear?
We just submitted the application. Just submitted the application.
So we really, uh, need to wait and see what comes back from the state on this and digest that.
I don't know that it really matters. This is, this is a plan of what's going on for the town. We're looking to produce these things. The structure, the regulations, the format is already in place within the state. That's why the consultant and, and the town, right? That's why the consultant would know ways to make it work. I mean, if it were site plan review or subdivision, the planning board would be more familiar with that. But these are housing programs. And I think you get the feedback. I think everybody here likes the idea of having smaller units, affordable units.
Absolutely.
The elder folks in town need a place to go.
Yeah, well, then it would be a lot more, it would be much bigger than that, um, once we took, you know, we divided this up.
So what's, so what's the final, the, the final plan for these three lots? Who owns this lot?
Well, this lot is owned by, uh, Windermere Estates, the four units, in red, in red.
And?
It's eighty thousand square feet, that's two acres. Two acres.
Are you involved with Windermere Estates?
Well, I'm one owned here, yes.
Two hundred and four frontage?
But, but I own, um...
So your, your final plan for this is what? Your final...
Well, somewhere along here would be a lot line.
Okay, so Windermere Estates would continue to own this, given the reduction in requirements since you will have sewers?
Correct.
And then, you would...
Purchase this and now all of this is tied in?
All three? One, two, three, and how far does this go?
Well, this runs, it, it doesn't run too far, but it does run off the plan.
Okay, so you're, okay. So you, so you and your wife would own, would, would own one, two, three?
Correct.
Okay.
And we would have frontage on, uh, Route twelve and frontage on Hope Street. The piece would be encompassed.
Yeah.
Right, and the only things I, I'm looking at here is you couldn't really change area, reduce the area of this one to be less than whatever is zoning required, like if you needed parking spaces. I know you've got parking spaces back here.
Correct.
You would have to maintain those parking spaces and do your lot lines, do all the things. But as far as juggling where the lot lines are, that doesn't really matter as long as the back or the existing facility doesn't then not comply with zoning anymore.
Right. So, the, my only issue then tonight is that, um, if it would be just in the minutes of the meeting, that there is no issue with redo, once I come in with a plan that shows a sewer line and the reduction in square footage that, it would be what, an A and R?
To do that.
Yeah, that would be an A and R, so, so I need, I need something in the minutes of the meeting to take to these people so that I can go forward with, um, planning and legal and, you know, what have you.
Can you get the A and R before the actual sewer is connected?
I don't think so, no, yeah. I don't, I don't think so.
It should have to be operational, yeah. And we would probably wanna see a permit, a, an expansion of the area. I think that might be, originally when they designed the sewers, it was gonna be really difficult to expand the sewer service area cause you were gonna have to do flow calcs and evaluations and all sorts of things.
Yeah.
But, assuming you're gonna get all that, you'll have sewer at those lots, then we would be able to reduce it. So you would bring in the sewer line, bring it through here, get them all connected and then say, okay, these all have sewer, so they only need ten thousand square feet per unit, and then that's what you're proposing.
Right.
May I ask you whom you contacted for the sewer?
I'm sorry?
Whom, whom you contacted for the sewer?
Uh, let me see, is it Butch?
Yeah, Jackson.
And then, uh, West, uh, Weston, I met with a Weston man person.
Weston and Sampson?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Weston and Sampson, yeah.
The, the town engineer for that?
Yeah. So, um, so then I would have access to the minutes of the meeting in the future. I can go back to these people here and then we just wanna keep the ball rolling.
And why would we need the sewer, I mean, why would we need that before he does the A and R if he's got the frontage and the... He just needs to put his...
Actually, we could, we could sign the A and R, but it doesn't mean that it's buildable. I mean, and then you might have to come back and...
I think it's proper to go sewer, A and R, and then...
The only nice thing about having the sewer, the sewer runs through the back of the property?
Yes.
Then you'd have all your, um, uh, what do they call, the, the access to the pipeline?
Easements.
All the easements would be on the A and R too.
Right.
So that'd be good.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
That's a reason to wait for that, I think.
Right, but for us to sign an A and R, all it has to show is the hundred and twenty feet of frontage and access, and he has that right now.
Yeah, he's got two hundred feet on both of those.
What you could do is you could knock this corner off and transfer it, and that's an A and R we would sign. You can draw whatever lines you want, run back, and we would sign it, so.
Yeah.
Signing an A and R doesn't give you the permit, it just...
No, and I would rather, I would rather not jump that. I would rather sewer, A and R, show, like you said, everything on there.
Yeah.
Then I can move forward cleanly. There's no interruptions later.
And you, you don't own the red right now, or you do own the red?
I do. Oh, no, I, I, well, I own partnership.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a twenty-five percent owner.
Okay, and but, and the yellows, you're a hundred percent?
Correct.
Okay.
Wow, yeah.
Forty-nine percent.
You know the owner?
I have a comment on that, but I'm not gonna say it.
We're, we're being...
You have some women here.
And, and we're on, uh...
Camera.
Yeah, on camera, yeah, so.
So I'm all set.
And if you have an idea of how many you're gonna be putting on there, that would be helpful too. Cause I think the housing trust is a good source and they're trying to, we, we wanna build that number up, so.
Yeah.
And also, if we can, the more area we can put in with the housing, the better, cause we have this... The state requires or wants to have a ten percent land, uh, or ten percent of the used, housing stock as affordable.
Yeah.
But there's also a standard that says if you have one and a half percent, if we get more land to go towards that, we meet the one and a half percent now, but it's nice to have a little bit of a buffer just in case we lose some of the other land. So, having more land in with that, if it's just wasted or land that might be associated with the back of the mall, put it in with this and that would help the town more with the requirements of the state.
The larger, the larger amount of land associated with the affordable housing is better.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the other thing too is if I'm correct, as the town does grow, which is very limited, but as it does grow, we've seen, we have some single family subdivisions here and there. That ten percent gets kicked back all the time because there's more housing stock.
Yes, incentives.
So it's a fight. You're fighting both ends.
But that's why we wanna try to keep with that one and a half percent, cause the land area doesn't change.
Actually, I think that's in there.
So, and that's, there is a discussion.
Yeah, it is, yeah, yeah.
So that's why we would like to get that land area on, cause that would be a, it's a safe trigger.
We have to check.
Yeah, and it's all about, I mean, we don't usually, and we don't expect to get, uh, a, a difficult forty B, like someone trying to jam it down our throat, but that's all it does, is by meeting those standards, it just means they can't force you to do something.
Yeah.
Right now, the town is trying to build this stuff up. So, it's not as though we're getting stuff forced down our throat.
Well, I'm not looking at apartments, I'm looking at housing for, um, you know, um, I don't like to use the word elderly, but, you know.
Senior housing.
Senior, se, yeah, that's what I'm more looking at.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what it says in there.
Yeah, that's what our ideas, that's what needs to grow.
I mean, the idea of universally accessible, I guess.
What, how, how big the lot is, one acre?
Oh, it'll be, um, it'll be almost two acres.
Two acres. How many houses you want to put in there?
I don't, I have no idea. None at all. What I'd like to do is vi, revisit this. I wanna visit my neighbors in the area and talk to them and, and let them know what, um, what I'm planning and then, um, and then hope that whatever the state comes back with is something that will work.
I don't think the state's really gonna change the document much unless they just reject it altogether, but I don't...
Oh, you think that this will be the document?
More or less.
It's mostly accepting the document that...
It's more, it's more the state says, oh, okay, you did it.
Yeah.
Now, you have a new date that you have a production plan in place and that's what we measure you, okay, you said you wanna do this in ten years. It's ten years from this date is what it's, is really what they're doing.
So where is the final approval coming from? Is it ZBA or is it planning board?
From what, from the documents?
This is a plan. So the plan has already been approved by the selectmen and town.
Oh, yeah, we've done and approved by the planning board.
So it's already been approved.
As far as the town's concerned, that's the document.
Right.
It's just that we submit it to the state for them to accept. You know, unless they have something really drastic that they wanna change.
We actually hired consultants to do it, so, and they're very familiar with the process, so we're not expecting really any changes.
Yeah, so are these consultants on board to meet with people like me?
Actually, I was gonna say that, is, are they referenced in there? It's COG associates.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought I, I did see, um, yeah, a group in here.
Yep, and there was two, two women, Courtney, I forget what the last name was, very clever about this stuff. One, we, we've talked to her before. She's got ideas about, um, if there was a house that we wanted to have affordable and it was already existing, they say, just help them buy the house and, you know, but put on the agreement in the, in the deed that says that it's affordable.
Let's see the document, please.
And, or like what you're doing, they, I mean, they have a lot of ideas about how to, to make these things work in the zoning, in towns, affordable, you know, I mean...
Cause to put in multifamily areas where it's not allowed under base zoning, so. There's been ways to do it.
Yeah, but I'm...
I don't know how to get around the rules, I just know what the rules are.
Yeah.
Two different sides to look at.
Right, yeah.
When does it say authors, I don't know.
What are you guys looking for?
Just the, the authors for the credit to the, to COG associates.
You said you saw it in there, so.
You can talk about it.
Yeah, I saw something in there, yeah.
And if not, you can send an email.
But they are very clever people.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, this is what they do, like you said. If you wanted ideas, they're full of ideas to do, how to get this to work.
So are they consultants so hired by the town already so that anyone like me can pick up the phone and make a call and then...
No, they're, no.
No, they're consultants that you could hire.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
They're consultants, they work both sides.
Yeah, all right, okay, yeah.
What they do for us is like, once you're, once you've established a, an affordable unit, they help us keep track of it, make sure that the, you're not renting it to a millionaire, cause you're not supposed to, or whatever. And they do the, uh, lottery to fill them, you know, so, so the people coming in are qualified to, to get into affordable units. And they help us out with other issues that we come up with, but they're not really, you know, if you wanted to hire them to help you, you had, you know, reach out to them.
Yeah.
But it would be your, your, your conversation.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Great.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Interesting stuff.
Thank you, yeah. Good night now.
All right, let's go back to take things in order here. Go back to, um, unless you wanna go do it.
You guys.
Yeah, you guys can choose your order.
Now, you're in charge, you, that's...
Then we're, then we're going back up, we're going back up to, going back up to number seven then.
Okay.
Take that one first. There's problems with this. Yeah, there's problems with this one, right?
The ZBA.
Oh, did we look at the A and R book? Is your office open? Yeah, if you would, please.
I thought you did a nice job though.
Yeah, well, I have some questions too.
Yes.
So we're looking at both, actually, we'll start with, uh, two thirty-nine, just because that's a little less. I've got the yellow.
Yeah.
Question marks on, we signed A and Rs for this at some point in the last few years, I think. So what I was trying to get was a date when we did that.
You did?
Yeah, we signed A and Rs, yeah. Yeah, and then you guys...
Those four or five lots?
I think so.
Cause I know he came before us and got a special permit for lot four, last year.
Did we ever do an A and R then for that? Or it was just a special permit?
He had, uh, he needed the frontage.
Yeah, I remember that.
It was less than a hundred and twenty, but more than a hundred and ten. And then it went back and then there was a big two acre property behind it. And then he had like five and lot six that eventually he was gonna develop. That's what this is about now, five, six, five and six.
So we didn't get an A and R, okay.
Oh, this one.
Yeah.
We got something?
Right. I don't know how, I don't, I just don't know how they're fitting, what they, uh, say.
So when we talk about...
Just period.
Yeah. We talk about lot five and lot six. What numbers are those on this map?
Two thirty-nine and two forty-one.
Two thirty-nine is the triangular one, I think, right?
That's lot five. Can we zoom in or zoom out?
I don't know, you keep moving around.
Fourty-five point five.
There you go.
Forty-five point five.
So, so what, all right, there's too many numbers. Two thirty-nine Woodland Street is which one?
The blue one.
The blue, the blue...
The blue dot.
The blue dot is two thirty-nine?
Wait.
No.
I'm trying to look up. Two forty-one, sorry.
And two thirty-nine is the triangular one?
Yes.
Yes. Lots are...
So we didn't, all right.
Okay, so two thirty-nine is lot five. And two forty-one is lot six?
I don't know what five and six are. Oh, yeah, they, they apply.
We keep referring to them as all these numbers and it gets confusing, so. Why don't we use those numbers?
So if it wasn't divided using the A and R process, does that mean this is how it was divided when they bought it?
Hold on, what was the question?
So, if it wasn't divided using the A and R process, does, does that mean this is how it was divided when they bought it?
No, they bought it and then they divided it using a special permit for the ZBA to have even less than what's, less frontage. So making the lots more narrow than what is required under zoning. So they makes, make the lots more narrow, and now they're saying they can't put a, a building on it cause the lot's too narrow.
Well, they sort of made their bed, back to sleep.
I have to agree.
This is lot five.
Is this the one that shows the buildings? Cause they said they said, did something with buildings on it and I couldn't see the plan.
I don't know, but this is, this is lot five.
All right, well, let's work on two thirty-nine.
That's, that's this.
So that's this one.
That's this.
Two thirty-five is two thirty-nine.
Two thirty-nine is...
Is, is lot six?
No, it's lot five.
That's lot five. This is lot five, right here. That's in the... And then I also have in math, two thirty, for lot six. Gonna stay on top of these things, you know.
Mark, pull up two thirty-nine if you can, cause I think it, it came up backwards for me on, on this one. I'm just thinking, going towards town center, it's, usually goes away. So what does this say for...
It says that's two thirty-nine. It says the triangular one is two thirty-nine.
Says the tri, so he's saying this is two thirty-nine?
That's lot, okay, that's lot six then, so it's backwards.
What's backwards?
Cause this is lot five and that's lot six. Lot six, he's saying is two thirty-nine, lot five is, is two forty-one.
And the number's two forty-nine.
And this is lot four.
Why are the numbers going up?
I have no idea.
Oh, it's on Woodland Street, so they're going up this way.
Yeah, you know, that's a weird street.
So, two, two thirty-nine?
Is it two thirty-nine Woodland or two thirty-nine Prospect?
Woodland.
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 They searched for it was two thirty-nine Woodland and came up with...
So this, so this is two thirty-nine?
Yes.
Which is lot six?
Yes.
And two forty-one is this one, which is lot five?
All right.
Okay, so the lot numbers go in reverse order to the address, okay.
Right, because the road comes up this way and goes up.
Yep.
So they're kinda saying this is down here.
They're just trying to mess with us with their backwards lot number.
That's the least of the problem.
So, which lot did they get the variance for, the special permit for?
No, the other one, last one.
This one?
Yeah, lot four, they got a special permit because it came in, in the frontage was a hundred and, hundred and twelve? I think it was. It was less than a hundred and twenty. So it was a hundred and...
Hundred and one.
And then it went down and then there was a big lot. It was two acres of land.
And that's still connected to this lot, right? All the back land is still connected to this lot?
Oh my goodness, it's huge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's, and that's the new house.
That's that one that, like you said, you could be, uh, have a...
Cups of sugar with your neighbor.
That's right, yep.
Yeah.
There was so much land in the back of that property that he could've done a quarterback. He could've, he could've split it off. He's called, I think it's called a quarterback, where he could've divided the lot into two, he could've put two houses on that back property.
Yeah, if it wasn't all wetland. It's got wetland.
Yeah, look at that.
He's, he's, he had more than enough.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Oh, he's got a, a area, but if you own a pond, you can't put a house in.
That's right.
Still?
You had that one, anyways, it doesn't matter. These are the maps.
So, yeah, all right, so to fill in the blanks that I have, the property in question is, was divided using, not the A and R process. They do, did we divide these? Watches at Woods. I don't remember that.
When?
If I can scratch that one.
When did, when did these lots get created? Split up? Is that what you're wondering?
Yes.
You think we did, and that's where you have two thousand fourteen listed?
Who signed it? Is that the A and R? No.
No.
Watchies at Woods, V L T S.
Yeah, I don't, and I didn't see Watchies at Woods in the thing, so it was probably done by.
Two thousand eleven.
Yeah, but I think it was Busy Bee or Bumblebee, whatever it was, Beehive Builders.
It was, it was in, in Vangelista.
I thought this one.
Two thousand eleven. Do you have anything on two thousand eleven?
I don't know across the street.
That's up in Crescent, that's up at Crescent. The one that's across from the, from the.
What is this, the two thousand eleven?
Effective revised date, July fourth.
Originally owned the medical place across the street.
Okay, so.
Well, it doesn't really matter. I think what we're, where we're at is, the property in question was divided from a larger parcel that contained more than. So, we've got one acre. This is how big, what's that one?
Uh, it doesn't say.
Well, these are the same plan, that's why.
Do you want the applications?
I think this, they have to be an acre, so one, two.
How much was last year?
Four and a half acres. So, about more than four and a half acres. And the, and the owner created the lots as they currently appear. Since this and the abutting lots were created after the date of the zoning bylaws, though they claim a hardship, it's difficult to prove, to prove a true hardship exists because of the shape of the lot. So, they're saying because of the shape of the lot, they can't put this long fourplex building in there? But, they created the lots. They could've created the lots a different way.
Correct. Do they still, do the same people still own both lots?
Yeah. Yeah, Vangelista does.
I'm not sure. But it doesn't matter, it's. Well, it means zoning. They can, but they can adjust the lot lines any way they want.
Then, since they own both.
Yes, yep. So, I mean, that's where it would be really tough to prove a hardship on that count. So, that was the first paragraph, or actually, the second paragraph. First paragraph, I just ended it instead of in two thousand fourteen, I just said recently. And then the next one, the zone line is shown here, right? So, the zone line is located here. They're allowed to extend that zone line under our current zoning thirty feet, cause it's, they allow more in this area than in the back.
Right.
So, they can push it back this way. So, they can put a two-family house in here if this were brought up to that corner line. They would be able to do a two-family house there. It's on sewer, I think, right? So, they need ten thousand square feet per lot.
A two-family house, cause it's in the business district?
Yes, because it's in the, because that's in the business. They can't put a multifamily house in a single residence district, so they can't put a two-family here. Cause this is a single residence district. So, they're not allowed to do that. So, they didn't ask for that variance, that's one of the things that I think I said in here. But, since they're, they can't put a single, a multifamily residence in a single residence district.
Right.
So, that should not be allowed from the start. And they shouldn't be granted two habitable dwell, habitable dwellings on a lot, because they created this situation where they can't fit the building. Or if they put it this way, they could easily do that. Put the buildings together, they can't, they can't fit four units in the area where multifamily housing is allowed. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And the multifamily housing would have to be physically located on.
Right.
In this area.
And then I.
And within thirty feet, I guess.
Or within, yeah, within, within the district or thirty feet plus.
Right, right.
Yes. So, that's the way it usually goes. Then, on top of all this, this, I note in the, on the second paragraph from the bottom, this is very similar to interpretation we got from town council on nineteen Crescent Street. Same thing is in existence, that there's a zone line, and they proposed they were gonna put in eleven units.
Yeah.
The interpretation from, well, that I asked town council for. The interpretation that came back from town council is they can only count the area within the multifamily district towards the number of units. You can't add units in a single residence district. So, basically, it looks like they have about, if this is one acre, they probably have.
Third?
A third of it. So, that's forty thousand square feet, so it looks like they might be able to get two units.
Maybe forty percent at the most, yeah.
At the most, so they may be able to get two units on that one. And they, but they would have to be in the front.
But then you can't build anything on the back.
Well, but he can't put it in the back anyway, cause he's not in a, he's in a single residence district.
Right.
Well, that's interesting, could he put a, a single unit back?
Well, if you want to add two habitable dwellings on a lot, which is another variance that he needs, but why? He bought this property, it's single residence zone with some business up front. He bought it, he got to squeeze in one house here, he was gonna get two more houses.
Can, is, is there an ability, why does he think he can ever put more than one res?
Well, he's in the business district, so in the business district.
Is this he can?
He's allowed up to four, he's got, he's allowed up to a four-unit building without getting a special permit from the planning board. And he's allowed one unit per ten thousand square feet. So, he's got a one, forty thousand, forty-six thousand square foot lot. He could put a four-unit building on that lot if it were all zone business.
Which it's not.
And, and if it were shaped in a way that it could fit a four-unit building.
It sounds like he wants to put two duplexes.
Yes.
Yes.
He wants four units on it.
Right, you can't do it.
Cause he says he gets four units by right, which I think he's wrong, cause he doesn't. He gets, he can put multifamily units in the business district, but he can't put them in the single residence district. So, he only gets one unit, maybe two, on.
Each property.
Well, no, on the first one.
First one, this one's different, yeah, this one's different.
On lot five.
On the, on the forty-five point one?
Yeah, not the triangle one.
Not the triangle one.
Next one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When they built the condos on Shrine Ave. Know what I'm talking about?
Nope.
When you come down Shrine Ave, Vangelista built those four.
No, they never came to any, they never came to the planning board, I don't know where, they, they got a permit from the building inspector.
Fine.
Cause I'm just wondering if that, where, if that land was residence, single residence or general residence?
I hope it wasn't. I hope it was general residence, cause then the building inspector made another mistake.
It was a different building inspector?
It was a different building, it was either.
We have so many.
Or Chris one.
That's why, no, it wouldn't have been Chris, well, it could've been, but I doubt it.
Because now, he owns the land right adjacent to that, and he's gonna be possibly building four units on that land.
As long as it's in an area where he's allowed to put multifamily, if it's in single residence, he can't do it.
Looking at it right now.
It looks like it's in business.
So, Jeff.
So, he's, he's looking to do that, you know, to build two habitable buildings, two family duplexes on the lot. And he's stating on section four point three G, only one habitable building shall be placed on any one lot. Applicant seeks to build two smaller duplex buildings with parking and traffic landscaping, rather than one large four-unit building.
Yes.
And you're saying that he can't.
No, he's allowed, well, he's asking for a variance for that, so that's okay. So, he's asking for a variance to put two separate buildings in.
Right.
Is he asking, what other variances is he asking for?
I have the application, same.
Yeah, I was just having a.
Right. Well, I want him to read it. Cause his application isn't really even clear with what, if I remember right, it wasn't clear with the specific variances that he's asking for, which is a requirement under the law.
Says a variance from the provisions of the West Coast zoning bylaw, as author of, under section four point two C of the West Coast zoning bylaw. More specifically, the bylaw authorized dimensional and use variances.
Right, and that's a section. Four point two C is a whole, a whole section, if I remember right.
Well, I think a couple paragraphs later, the applicant seeks a variance to build two habitable buildings on the lot under section four point three G.
Right, that's what I just read.
Yes.
That was the one, okay.
So, that's, I agree, that's the one variance that he's asking for. What's the other variance he's asking for?
The other one is for the other lot.
No, it's on, this is all on one lot. So, I guess maybe he's not asking for it, and then he's not allowed to build it. If he's not asking for a variance, and he doesn't comply with zoning, then he's not allowed, right? So, he needs to ask for another variance.
For what?
If he wants to build, which one are we talking about? Which one do you wanna be talking about?
Uh, two thirty-nine is the application I'm reading, but they're both very similar.
So, for two, well, there's a little difference between the two. So, two thirty-nine, it just does the two, it wants, which is the triangle.
Okay.
He wants two separate habitable dwellings.
And, and the line for that, he's got.
And, right, so the zone line.
He's got more than half of an acre there, probably.
Right, so he's got more than half an acre, so he gets two lots. He probably doesn't have, cause it doesn't define how much area was, is within each zone. So, if he were to, if he were to have thirty thousand square feet in the zoning, the business zone plus the thirty feet. If he has thirty thousand square feet, he could have three units within that area.
Yep.
Okay, so, on, on lot six, he's asking for one variance. On lot five, he's asking for two variances.
Right, so on lot six.
Six.
It's two thirty.
He can't build it the way he's proposing it, cause he's in violation.
Of the zoning.
He doesn't have enough area for four units.
And then on lot five, he's asking, the first variance is to extend the building depth into yard. Okay?
Right, he wants to extend the business zone way back here, is what he's looking for.
Second variance on that lot is to allow two buildings on one lot.
Yep. And so, it looks like he's getting a little more, but if he, if you grant him this variance.
On what lot are we talking?
On the second.
Five.
On five.
Okay, he's asking for two of them.
Right. So, let's stick, we all set with, that's why I started on six. This is a little easier. This is just, he's looking for two buildings.
And he might be able to put three, is what we're saying, depending on how big this is.
He's able to put two buildings.
On that lot.
Two buildings with three units?
Yes.
Instead, instead of building one four-unit.
He's not allowed four units.
Okay, he wants to build two two-units.
Right, but he's not allowed four units on that site. He can't have four units, cause he's got this much area, and he needs the whole area to be, to get forty thousand square feet. To get forty thousand for the two, for the four units.
We don't know, we don't know the measurement of this.
Right, well, but if, he's required by zoning to have at least a forty thousand square foot lot. So, the whole lot is forty thousand plus some, and he's got this whole section back here that is taken out of that forty thousand. He needs a full forty thousand to get four units.
I just did this area calculation of the triangle lot in the front. It's rough, but that area in business.
Yep.
Looks like it's measuring the point three nine acres, but it's probably a little bit more. You know, it's a, maybe a less than a half an acre.
So, let's give it point five acres, so that's twenty thousand square feet.
So, that's two.
So, that's two units. So, he's only allowed two units in this area here.
You write that up, you know?
Well, do you understand what I'm?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, you know, he doesn't have enough.
Cause he can't use single residence area to add multi-residence. And that's from town council, I sent that off to you a year or two ago. On nineteen Crescent.
Okay, so now, that takes care of lot six. So, now, on lot five, he wants to do, he wants to do the same thing. He wants to build two buildings with two units, but he wants to put, and that's for one, and then he wants to push the, the depth into the, into the yard.
So, the things you, I would look at is that how much area is in the business district?
That looks like it's point one six acres.
So, this is point one six, so he basically has one unit here.
But he can build it thirty feet past that line.
So, he could probably get, like I said, he could probably get two units if he goes thirty feet.
So, he can get two buildings with two units in each one?
No, two units. Number of units per, per lot is ten thousand square feet.
But that, that's per zoning. I mean, if he's going for a variance, he can get whatever he can get a variance for.
Yeah, but he hasn't asked for a variance to have higher density. He's asking for a variance to have two, to break a requirement from.
He thinks it's his right to have the four units on each lot. And, and we're saying you don't actually get four units.
What he, what he, I think what he's trying to say is, is that it would look better if he had two buildings with two units, instead of one building with four units.
That's what he's trying to say, but he doesn't get that.
He can't have one building with four units.
Okay, right. He can't have a building with four units or two buildings with two units.
But it would look nicer with two.
It probably would look nicer.
It would look lovely.
Well, you couldn't fit them on these lots, and the lots were not made, and the zoning is not made for a four-unit.
Right.
Right.
Apartment complex.
Okay, so, on this, on this.
And the slope is tough right there.
On the first request, the building five.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot five, he's looking for, extend the building depth into yard. The district boundary line devises lot part single residence, part business, section two point four of the West Coast zoning bylaw provides that. Regulations for the less restricted portion of such lot shall extend not more than thirty feet into the more restricted portion, provided the lot has a frontage on a street from a less restricted district. This lot has frontage in the business, less restricted district.
That he has, yes. He's allowed to use this thirty feet.
Okay.
No question.
But not in the calculation of how much area.
Yes, yep, yes.
No, not in the calculation of the area.
Yes, he is allowed, that, so in the calculation of area, it includes that thirty-foot extension in our zoning.
Okay.
I didn't just do that.
So, then he says, because the zoning line runs diagonally across the property, the development must be made close to the street. The building facades will be much closer to the street than those of the neighboring buildings. Applicant desires to extend the restrictions under commercial district up to a hundred and forty feet deeper into the residential district on the northerly side of the lot. And fifty feet, fifty deep, feet deeper into the residential district on the southerly side of the lot, so that they can place the building at the same depth as the neighboring buildings.
Well, these, this is not the same depth as the neighboring buildings.
That's right.
What's he saying?
With the thirty-foot extension allowed under the bylaw, the building will have to be located much closer to the street than the neighboring buildings, in the area of the steepest slope and where they will have most visual impact. Locating the buildings further back is better. Applicant seeks to a variance that increases the thirty-foot extension to a hundred and forty feet.
Of what?
On the northerly side of the lot into fifty feet on the southern side. This variance would make the extended use, extended use area parallel to the street, two hundred feet offset therefrom.
Yeah, he was.
So, in other words, he, from what I, from what reading this, he wants to extend that from thirty feet to a hundred and forty feet.
Here, yeah.
Right, right.
And fifty feet on the southern side.
That's this.
Yep.
Is that?
He can ask for all sorts, he could ask for all sorts of different things, but in his request.
Quarter of here is only two hundred and fifty. So, he's gonna, the house would be way back.
Hundred, no, he's going a hundred and fifty feet on that side.
I'm just, for scale, this is two hundred and fifty for me here.
Right, so half of that is one twenty-five, so it's.
Somewhere around here.
Yep, so he's, and that's pretty much what he's showing here on the, he's got the bend there, and that's where he's gonna put the house. So, that's where he wants to do it.
But he's, he's asking for more units than he can.
He's not, the first thing, he's not allowed to get more than.
Two units.
One unit per ten thousand square feet. I don't really know what the area is, because he didn't give us that information, he didn't give you the information. So, I hope you guys don't act without getting that information.
On lot five, can we have?
On either one.
Oh, well, lot five.
You know, what's this area?
How much is that area?
It counts that, yeah.
That's what we.
That's what he's allowed.
To base it.
So, he can go, he can go up to this line.
Yes.
Cause that's that thirty foot.
Yes.
Okay, so what we need to know is what.
How big is that?
Is this here, right?
That's, that determines how many units he can put on.
Right.
The placement.
This is more than ten thousand square feet, if it's twenty thousand square feet, then he can put two units.
If it's more than twenty thousand square feet, he can put it on. If it's nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, he gets one. So, and so, that's what it's based on. It's not, he gets forty thousand, or he gets four units on any lot.
I understand what you're saying.
So, that's, so his assumption in there, when he's talking about it, he gets four units on lot, he doesn't.
So, he was looking to extend this, besides the thirty feet, he wanted to go from here, he wanted to go a hundred and forty feet.
Yes.
In the, in the, yeah.
But the problem is, is that he said he wants two buildings, and to do that, it makes it a nicer situation, a better, from the street, it's more aesthetic.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not, because he's putting one of the buildings right up front.
Right.
Exactly where it would go anyway.
And like turn to the side.
Who drew those boxes? Who drew these? It's on the plan?[1577.24]
That's, that's.
That came with it.
Is that, okay, all right.
So basically, he's putting, he's saying in his thing that he wants to be able to move things back, but then he doesn't move things back on either lot. Both of them are thirty feet off the front. So he's yanking your chain on that.
He also wants, he wants, he wants one building with four units and put that back here.
Right.
Can't have four units on it.
Right, he, but he could, he's putting a building here anyway, so what does it matter whether it's this big or twice as big?
Well, no, I think what he's asking for is to put one building back here on this lot.
No, he wants two.
He wants two, two, two units.
Yeah. Two buildings on each lot.
Oh, instead of one four unit building.
Right, cause a four, a four unit.
The other way around, yeah.
A four unit is too big. It won't fit on his narrow lots that he created.
Cause he's saying that multifamily of the four units are authorized by the bylaw.
And they're not.
He's saying it is.
Well, ask him how he justified that. I mean, it's, you can ask the questions.
Oh, I can understand that.
And he's a lawyer, maybe he knows more. I mean, I, we, I went to town council and interpretation I got from town council is you can't include, even if the lot were forty acres, you can't get, put everything in one tiny little section of it.
This measurement looks like, like that's twenty feet right there for scale. So he pushed this in, I don't know, I can't do it very accurately. Yeah. But you get to a quarter of an acre, so he's, he's got two units there. Quarter of an acre?
Yeah.
Quarter of an acre is, how much is a quarter of an acre?
Ten thousand, that's only ten thousand. Ten thousand.
So he's got one.
He's got one.
Got one.
Pushing then in the, somewhere around twenty feet, thirty feet.
And the idea is, I mean, he can ask for all these things if he wants to build it, but the ZBA shouldn't be granting a permit because you have to show hardship. And what is the hardship? He bought two developable house lots and he can put two houses on it.
Yeah.
So where is there a hardship?
Did, did you read this whole thing?
Uh, I think so.
Okay, can I just ask for an explanation?
Sure.
Okay, this came, this is part of the deal. It's called the request for zoning relief.
Yep.
And what he's stating in here, I really don't understand. He says it's authorized by the Massachusetts zoning enabling act.
Yes.
What, what is that?
It allows the zoning board of appeals to grant a variance. It's, it's a lot of legal stuff to, to justify something that they're allowed to do and you guys know they're allowed to, they're allowed to request a variance. But the standard they have to hold, and you've been to trainings on this, is the three standards.
Oh, yeah, and you have to meet all three of them.
And he doesn't get anywhere close to, what, what part of this lot is a, a lot based on topography? No, he's still building there. He built, he created the lot to be narrow. If he wanted to create these lots in a different way and maybe take this lot line and move it up here, they could make this lot so they could drive up here and put in a big house in the back. But he can only put multifamily units in the front. So he's trying to get the benefit of multifamily density, but not having a lot in the whole multifamily zone.
Isn't the third thing for variance a benefit to the?
Non-detrimental.
It's not detrimental.
Oh, non-detrimental.
Not detrimental.
Right, and that, that one is pretty flexible.
And no matter what training you go to and they talk about variances, they tell you that all three have to be there. It's not just like one out of the three or two out of the three. All three conditions have to be met, or the ZBA should not be approving the variance.
Alright, so I think.
So whatever you write up, cause this is coming before us December sixth.
Alright, so generally, I think we've got that in this letter.
I thought so.
The only thing that I would ask the vice chair of the CBA is that, um, that as soon as you can get your decision, you know, your opinion to us.
I'm hoping to do it tonight.
Okay, then as soon as you can get it to us, we can get it to the board and to Mr..
Which one?
Oh, okay.
If we get out of here, you'll do it tonight.
I'm sorry.
Alright, so I can edit it tonight. I can email it to you and you can sign it.
And then just send it to Toby and she'll pass it over.
I'll email it to you and you print it out.
Print it out.
Sign it, scan it, send it to Melanie and Toby and the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good to go.
Cause as soon as we can get this to, to the petition, the battle off. That way it gives him, it gives him time to find out about this. You know, review it and see what, you know, see if he has any questions about it, instead of him coming all the way to the meeting and finding out.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. I'm surprised his attorney doesn't.
He has an attorney?
Yeah, Kurtsey.
Kurtsey.
George.
Yes, go, go, George.
Short stocky guy, right there on, um, West Boston Street, right there across from, um, the gold place.
What about the? When we get to the next one is.
Fifty-seven Goodell.
Yes, fifty-seven Goodell, I, I, uh, pushed that one out and we may wanna add a little something more to that one, but did people get a chance to review? Are you familiar with the situation?
Yeah.
Um, which one is this?
Fifty-seven Goodell.
Do we have a plan for that one? I didn't get a plan in the package either. Just so we can see what it looks like. But generally, they're proposing.
Something that's bigger than the actual house.
Yeah, there's a house that's twelve hundred, I think. I don't have the exact numbers, but the house is like twelve hundred square feet.
Yep.
And they're putting in, in a garage that's.
Four point five times bigger than the garage.
Not four, it wasn't four point five.
It's bigger than my house.
It's going, it used to be sixty by ninety.
I could build my house in their garage.
And it was approved by the building inspector, the first building inspector. Then when Chris Lund came in, he disapproved it, but he sees it as this.
Yep.
Then he came back and he talked to George, the new, the building, yeah, active building inspector.
Okay.
And George and him had a conversation and basically, and Raj can testify, cause I know, he's heard the story. It was an agreement that if he came back with a different plan, a smaller plan, the building inspector would look at it and review it. He did look at it and he issued him, said it was okay, that it did meet the requirements now, and he did issue a building permit.
Yes, so currently, it's under construction.
It's under construction. And so now, one of the bodies is appealing.
Upset.
Well, they are.
So what is the, what are the dimensions? The new dimensions are sixty by ninety? Is that the, is that the?
That's the smaller one.
That's the smaller one?
Yeah.
No, 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 no. Sixty by ninety was the original one.
That's.
No.
Well, wait a minute.
Do I have to separate myself from this while I know her?
Well, forty-eight by ninety plus a twelve foot over.
Yes.
So that's sixty.
They coached their kids in soccer. And that, then.
And how, what, what are the dimensions of the house?
Issued that permit, a building permit.
On, so on what basis did the, did the building inspector approve this smaller?
Hold on, higher level.
Hold on.
Okay. A reasonable interpretation of the phrase accessory use could not be a use that is larger than the use to which it is proposed.
That's the thing that I look at, but then I found, after I drafted this, um, I found in our own bylaws, it talks about accessory use.
So the originally, you know, they had a building sixty by ninety.
Proposed.
And then it was modified as forty-eight by ninety.
Plus a twelve foot over.
Yeah.
Did you read the, the letter, the case from, um, from, um, her lawyer?
Yes.
And he talks about the structure does not qualify as an accessory use in building for the following reasons, and he gives five reasons. Did you read that?
Yeah, but it, they didn't seem like really good reasons, but. What is this, sixty-six?
You know that, that, that his property is, um, landmark and it's on a private way.
Yes.
Know that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, that's, and he over, he overcame the, and I think that's what I wrote in here, was that he originally didn't have the twenty-five foot front yard setback. So they reduced the size of the building from a hundred and twenty feet down to ninety.
Now it covers the twenty-five.
So now it's set back supposedly.
Yeah, and I think that that's, that's probably why the building inspector, you know, approved it because it ma- he made the building smaller and now by doing that, now it meets all the.
It meets the setbacks, but the idea, and I, we, the planning board sent a letter to the ZBA and it was copied to the building inspector. I would have hoped that he'd read it, that it said something about accessory use. We questioned, how can an accessory use? Before your last meeting when you, you had an appeal, right? Or did we not send it?
Can we, can?
No, cause we, he never appealed it. He, he withdrew because the building inspector approved the building permit. He was coming to us to appeal the decision, but then because of the.
Oh, okay.
He went back there and they made it another, um, he made the building smaller, so that's with the building inspector. But he, the last, at the last meeting, it was that, um, that administrative appeal by Gabriel was.
Was withdrawn.
Was withdrawn.
Without a residence.
Alright, so what we're looking at is what's an accessory use, cause he's saying this building is an accessory use. So you go to page sixty-five in Mayan, section five point one of the regulations. And this applies to single residents, general residents and business districts. It goes, talks a little bit, talks about swimming pools. The second line item says the term accessory use in this section shall not include garage space for more than three automobiles, except for owner's use. So if the garage is bigger than something for three automobiles, I mean, the way, that's the way I write it. If it's bigger than three automobile garage, it's not an accessory use. And I guess that's what.
What's the page number?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
It's such in five point one, accessory use.
And it's the, it's the bottom part of it. So accessory uses are permitted on the same lot and customarily incident to any of the uses permitted in section three point two and not detrimental to a residential neighborhood. And we got all the setback stuff, but then to be an accessory use, it's incidental, which I don't know if it's, I guess I interpret that as being less than the size of the primary. But that's not defined anywhere, but it also says a garage space for more than three automobiles, except for.
Yeah, but he is planning to store only three vehicles, right?
He said it's a four thing garage and the average size of a, the average size for.
A single car.
No, the average size for a three car garage is twenty-four by thirty.
We don't have a dimensions for a garage sizes.
Well, that's fine, but if you, if you assume, you go online and you find something that says the average, actually it says, I did a little research, was the ideal three car garage size.
Agree, agree.
Was twenty-four by thirty. So let's say it's twenty-four by thirty, that's fine. Let's double it even, fifty by thirty, that's still a third of what he's proposing.
Yeah, but he planned to store, uh, RVs.
He's not allowed to. It's a residential area. He's not al- it's, he doesn't get an accessory use unless it's three or, three or less vehicles.
But, but that links it, now maybe I'm mis, I'm not reading it, it says garage spaces for more than three automobiles, except for owner's use.
So if the owner is gonna use twelve cars, he can, he can build a garage for twelve cars.
Building it for the, for his vehicle and he has a motor home and he wants to put the motor home in the garage. That's the purpose of, you know, one of the reasons for it.
How big is a motor home? I question that except for owner's use.
I don't know.
You question it cause it's not clear?
Cause it's not clear, cause it, that makes me, it's like, when I read that, then it, it's like, you could, that the accessory use shall not include garage space for more than three vehicles, a lot of, except for owner's use, like, un- unless they are being used by the owner.
In other words.
So that's it, then that's exactly.
That's, I think that's unclear.
So, so I don't think this one applies.
Read that one again.
Well, I think that since it's for owner, owner's use, he can have more than three autos in there.
Right, but why wouldn't the owner, it's the owner's garage and it's the owner's vehicles. Why wouldn't it always be except for the owner's use? The owner owns it.
I don't know. I, yeah, I, I don't know, I think that's unclear.
This is, hang on, this is in single residence, general residence and business districts. You could have a business use for that. You could be fixing up cars and restoring them and having a big building for that.
Restoring them for somebody else.
For owner's use.
I don't know, and that's why, I mean, that's the question I have. I, I read that for owner's use is confusing, but I see the beginning and it just clearly says garage space for more than three automa-.
Except for owner's use. Then you could, then you can have garage space for more than three automobiles. That's the way I read it.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, I was actually looking at is the, except for owner's use means the owner has.
This is the problem, this is the problem with the lack of commas.
That's right.
And there are lawsuits that have been won and lost on the lack of a comma.
And this is.
Then we go back to common sense.
Common sense means an accessory use probably shouldn't be larger than the original building on the property. And I agree with that.
Right.
Okay.
How come, uh, the building inspector, what looked at?
Okay, because it says here that, um, Judge Tignor, interim building inspector, indicated that he was issuing the permit as a replacement for the void permit based upon the structure being an accessory use. To qualify as an accessory use under section five of the West Boston zoning bylaw. The use must be customarily incident to any of the uses permitted in section three point two and not detrimental to residential neighborhood. So basically, if I'm reading it right, he's, what I just asking, what, what Sarah just said, it says afterwards, except if it's for the owner's use. Well, he is using it. In other words, three cars, you can't have more than three cars. So if you were gonna rent a space and Sarah and I were gonna, and Sarah was gonna rent a space and I was, you know, that's three cars. That's not the owner's use. He's renting it out to us.
So he wouldn't, he wouldn't be allowed, right.
He's using this whole thing.
But what does incidental use mean?
Right, incidental use, incidental use.
It's not gonna be used as a banquet hall or something else. It is incidental and it's just storage of, it's just storage of vehicles which is incidental to the residents on the property, so it.
It's just for them.
Right, but, well, but the idea is that you can do that, I, and I read it that you can do the, it's incidental, the usage stuff. You can have a garage. Everyone can have a garage on their site.
He just wants a large garage.
Get to be too large.
Well, doesn't really say in here, does it?
But if it's an accessory use.
As a car, but if you can't have a garage, it's too big.
Yeah, it is.
I think you could argue whether an RV is an automobile, but.
I mean, well, but that, I don't even wanna go there.
Well, that's. I think it's getting a little bit, I think the, the comparison to the living space is, is a valid thing too.
So that's the way we've got it drafted. So you wanna just leave the letter as it is? And it basically, there is, there was no plan including in the petition, but the facts revolve around the definition of accessory use. Is a sixty by ninety metal garage building an appropriate accessory use at the proposed location?
That's a very good question.
If they put it, if he had a hundred acre site and he put it in the middle of a hundred acres, that would be fine.
No one would even notice.
But this is twenty-five feet off the front yard and about fifteen feet off the side yard. So that's, it's the location, and then you go, the Merriam-Webster, whatever it is, definition of accessory includes the idea of it being secondary or minor, and I give a reference for that.
So Melanie Sylvia Silva is a, a butter?
Yeah. That she's the one that's filing the.
And she claims that it's too, she claims that it's intrusive and detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Right.
And she's had a, she's had a real estate person come out. She says that in there. A real estate person came out and said it's gonna reduce the value of your property.
Okay.
So it's detrimental to the neighborhood. They proved that.
That's, yeah, that's probably.
So we believe that the intent of this wording was to limit an accessory structure to being smaller or lesser than the primary structure in, on, on a site.
Can I talk anything, I guess?
So.
So can we void the building permit?
We don't, we are just making a recommendation to the ZBA. The ZBA can void it.
You see, but, you know, it's kinda confusing to me because the fact is that, you know, this has been going on for quite a while, okay.
Define, what's quite a while?
Months.
Okay.
Okay.
Not years.
And now, and now all of a sudden, he had petition to come to the ZBA with an administrative appeal. He was appealing Kurt, uh, Chris Lund's decision, did, for the C seven six, okay? Talked to George, like I said, George told him, you know, whatever the, the plan was, make it smaller. So he did. And then like I said, this is what the building, why the building inspector issued it, okay? But he also referenced section three point two, which is uses, but I don't see anything in there that says anything about accessory use.
No, the use, well, no, it's a use is allowed. Section five point one is the accessory use.
Right.
And it's accessory to the three point two uses.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I can't find anything on the three point two.
It's not, cause it's in five point one. The use is allowed cause it's a residence and a residence, an accessory use to a residence is a garage. So the, he's allowed to have a garage. It's the magnitude of the garage.
But three cars, well, whatever.
Well, a three car garage is twenty-four by thirty.
Right, plus a, how many, has he mentioned how many vehicles he's gonna be, put in there?
I don't know.
A three car garage.
Says in there, four car garage.
Four car garage.
Or four vehicle garage.
Including the motor home.
And that may be one of the vehicles.
I mean, a motor home is certainly.
Well, she also, she also, with her lawyer also, as far as, you know, the structure not qualifying accessory use in building, they also, um, cite, uh, Burnham versus Hadley, fifty-eight mass appeals court of two thousand and three.
And what does that say?
I have no idea. Basically, I must talk about, uh, the magnitude of what might otherwise be considered accessory use may be sufficient to disqualify it as an incident, incidental use.
That's right, yes, so that's it. I missed that part.
That must be what Burnham and Hadley must be talking about.
Raj.
And like Vinnie said, you were right. It says the average square footage of a four car garage is forty-eight by thirty, or fourteen hundred and forty square feet. Both these lead accommodated vehicles, but also provide able. But see, you know, like I said, you know, like what Sarah was saying, you're reading that five point one, you know, and it, it follows it, well, this can't be done. But then it says afterwards, you know, you can't have more than three cars, except for the owner's use.
We're not even going there. That has, we did, we're not even putting that in our comments.
But that's, that, that's why, that's one of the conditions that the building inspector issued the building permit, citing that.
He cited the first part. He didn't cite the part about three automobiles.
But that's all part of five point one.
It is.
We're citing incidental use and we're citing detriment to the neighborhood, I think are two objections, correct?
Yes, so I need to add detriment to the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, hopefully he stopped constructing.
At some point, uh, was that the law case, was that, uh, at some point we were talking, not in this case, about defining accessory use and primary use, and in a single residence zone, all, everything, the primary use is the residence. And then when something gets bigger than the residence becomes the primary use, which makes it ineligible? I think we did this on something else. I forget what the project was.
It's the idea of, yeah, is it bigger, but someone, somewhere talked about, well, as long as it's not four times as large. Like, well, that is a terrible standard. But I think having it the same size makes more sense, which is what I think we did in the past, but I don't remember where that was.
I forget what the project was, was, something was, we were talking about making it, it would become the primary use of the property,
Gotcha.
which in a single residence zone has to be a residence, and the other use was, I don't know.
And I think you were talking about one hundred Goodill.
Is it?
The guy that built the accessory apartment of the garage, where the garage in the breezeway was bigger than the house was?
Uh, I, I thought it was before that, but ma, I don't remember the project.
Because now they're touring down the house and he's rebuilding the house.
Can anyone describe the placement of this garage and where, um?
Highlighted one is Missy's.
I'm not even sure where I knew.
This is Missy, this is, well, this is the, the town, the baseball field.
Yep.
Yeah, and tennis courts are right.
And tennis courts are over here.
Yeah.
And then there's a parking lot over here, actually, the parking lot kinda comes up.
It almost abuts that driveway.
It does, yeah.
So that's Missy's property right there, and then this is his property.
Is it, or do you know, if you know the property, that's where the tennis courts are, but the tennis courts are actually into the neighbor's property, I think, from what I saw on the maps. Go into that and click on the aerial photo, you know how to get that up?
Yeah, but they don't come up, all the buttons are too small for my fingers.
Mark it with an X.
Uh, which ones?
Smaller fingers.
I don't know if I can get there.
Yeah, actually it shows, the plan shows the tennis court in there.
Okay.
Damn, it's a good thing I come with all this stuff.
Right?
Is it his tennis court?
Yes, so there's this tennis court there, it's in the right of way. I guess, and the driveway comes up and goes this way, so we just didn't think-
Is it tennis court back there?
Yes.
Existing single family.
And a pool.
I, I've been, I've sort of seen the pool, that I have some of those.
So this is, this building's one right here.
On top of the tennis court?
Yes, I'm pretty sure, right?
I believe so, I'm not sure.
Ooh, look at us, there we go.
I thought it was going in.
Oh, I found street view, but I can't find the-
The satellite view?
Is this any better?
I can't find just the satellite picture.
Um, you see halfway down the list on the right?
Yeah.
That's little globe thing, hit that.
Little globe thing, you know, that one.
Yeah, that one.
It's highlighted, but I don't know what it's doing.
Just hold on.
It, it was, see, usually they take it and think.
Is that a DOS phone?
My computer works faster than that.
There's a DOS there.
Well, this is-
Do you still have flip, uh, floppy? Yeah, I take the page and I go like that, and it works.
You take the cellophane?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mile, not the mile, what's that?
You sure it's that, the globe one?
It's, well, maybe because you're so small, it might not, I thought that's what it was for.
I would, I would, that would be my guess.
But that's all right, it's on, it's on the east side.
I can go to, just right on there, Google, okay.
Yes, yes, Google silent, pretty great.
But it doesn't have lot lines.
Right.
It doesn't have lot lines.
But I think we kinda, wherever it is, we know what we're saying and we just issue you the letter.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say, it's landlocked. Is it, is it, is it Missy's driveway that he has a right to or something?
Yes.
Well, that's kind of a weird thing to do to it.
It's the pool.
It's the way it already is.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's still a lot line, so.
Where's the tennis?
You know what?
Right away, okay.
Yeah, this is, okay, yeah. Next tennis court.
Get some good news.
Well.
So what I will do is, I'm gonna draft this based on, actually, I'll just leave it as it is, cuz we, I don't know, it's still the same idea of, if, I don't know where it would come from, that the larger use then becomes the primary use, and a primary use of garage is not allowed. I don't know where that, I like the idea, but it's not a, I think you're a little wide there.
Is, is that written somewhere, Mark?
Yeah.
What?
Is that written somewhere?
That primary, primary use, I forget what the, what project we were doing it on.
Is it a, was it a legal decision of some sort that somebody-
It was something like that, it was, somebody wanted to do something, it might not have been a planning board thing, it might have been a, a different project.
Well, let's get this moving so we can get out of here.
Yeah.
Are you talking about that one of the-
So that's another one, if you can get it to the ZBA.
Was it the thing or was it business?
We will have it, oh, which, the other one is. Paul will jump on that, cuz actually that prior letter was given, I remember now, they were having a meeting the next morning, and it was gonna be hand delivered to the building inspector.
Right, but because, but because of the fact is that he dropped his appeal, we never caught that.
No, I, I didn't go to the ZBA, but I went to the building inspector, so I don't know whether he's thought about the idea of accessory use.
So who gets a copy of that then?
It'll be on the-
On your letter?
Yeah, goes to the building inspector.
Okay.
So, Toby, building inspector?
Yes, he, he, goes to the ZBA, but copies to the building inspector.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I shouldn't be commenting anything.
And we also, yeah, so we have more stuff. We have the, we have Vinnie's list.
Vinnie's list?
Updated.
Well, now it won't be because everyone here will have input.
It'll always be Vinnie's list.
When is your next meeting?
Uh, month, December twelfth.
December twelfth?
Yeah. And the, and the, and it is hungry to get the meeting of that.
Is that Tuesday?
No.
Get the what?
She's hungry to get the, the, uh, the Vinnie's list, uh, reviewed by the Vinnie's list, but she wants to have a Vinnie's list review meeting. But she needs our updates first.
Well, there's not a heck of a lot, how many letters have we gotten from the building inspector?
Approximately between zero and-
Negative.
Zero. So, how could things change if we don't hear from them?
So you wanna discuss this next time and not tonight?
Well, I, I don't know, I'm not sure if anything has changed, I haven't, usually, or the list that I saw that you sent out, it's actually a nicer format, that's pretty.
Too much trees.
The one that I, well, I didn't do it.
Oh, who did that?
Neither, well, neither, I got it from Anita's message.
That is so list?
So I gotta check that to make sure that some didn't just disappear.
You guys working on Vinnie's list?
Yeah.
All right, so I don't know whether that's the newest.
Well, I don't know if it's the newest either, it had a date of July in it.
Right, I've got something in September that I-
Well, then you had, okay.
We're drawing on-
Did you merge, did you merge your later comments with that then? I wasn't, that wasn't, I wasn't sure if your later, if your comments were already merged into that document.
No, cuz mine was from September, my most current one, I looked at, it was September twenty-first or something.
It looked to me like the version Anita said to me was dated in July, I might be wrong.
All right.
Okay, so, so we're done with that.
And if people could look at it, if you know of any zoning violations?
What about this recent one, we got an email from Shariel regarding the storing of-
Post, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's a zone, another zoning thing.
Another zoning thing.
Well, what are they gonna do?
They're gonna, they're gonna store RVs.
I just got that this morning.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's just coming this morning.
Yeah.
That's the lot that they tried to give last year.
Everything still applies, they're not gonna sell, they're not gonna do anything, that's what they said when they originally-
No, 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 no.
Are they leasing?
They have to come in with for a, uh, site plan review, wait till then.
They were gonna put a building on there.
Oh, were, oh, were they?
They were gonna put like a trailer.
This is the property that got cleared between, between the church and the house, yeah.
Can they legally store there?
What, what are they gonna store there?
Can they store the RVs? So they are saying, you know?
Where do the RVs go?
RV goes to the flag state.
What do you, what do you do with an RV?
RV, they are trying to sell it.
Right, and what is, what are they just doing with it, they're storing it there?
Just storing it.
So it's just parked there?
Yeah.
How many, how many are they gonna park?
Like in front of the other building?
Yeah, right.
At the, yeah, in back of, in back of gourmet donuts.
Yeah.
They already have the same use.
Well, that's on, that's on our list.
Yeah, so-
Which hasn't been enforced, haven't heard a word on that.
Right.
So, let's still get back to the point, they wanna store vehicles, to store vehicles, they're gonna park vehicles.
Yes.
Where do you park things? In a parking space.
In an empty lot.
If they have fifteen parking spaces, then they need a site plan review. Cuz otherwise, the neighbors are gonna have a whole bunch of stuff parked right next to them, and they haven't had a chance to make any comments or do anything. That's the whole point of site plan review.
Well, they have to pave the lot first.
No, it doesn't have to be paved.
Well, okay, gravel.
They could gravel it, but just, this, cuz their site right now that you guys approved
Yeah.
has, it's mostly gravel.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Right, so it's not that they need to pave it.
That you guys paved it.
You heard that one. But, um, but the idea is that they're parking something, and when you do a development, I mean, that's what's, that is what got site plan review in place, was because they were doing these things without having any feedback from the public.
Yeah, but the, the thing is, you know, they are not the property owners, they are just renting it.
Okay, does it matter?
It's a trust.
It's the butters.
But doesn't-
If you're in a butter and you see forty-five, or let's say twenty RVs right up against your property.
And all the trees are gone from that lot now.
Yeah, which got, I got three phone calls just from the people who live in the condos.
I wouldn't be very happy if I lived in those, in that con, in that building.
But they weren't.
And, no.
Of course they weren't, they had a nice tree view, and now they have a view of RVs parked across Route twelve.
And they're gonna get a closer view of them if they live across, which is fine.
That's why they should not be allowed to, in my personal opinion, they should not be allowed to tip, to demo the property until they have a specific plan in place.
I would agree with that a hundred percent.
I know that they can't do that, because look what happened on Crescent.
That's right.
With Binsley's property, they just cleared it, they went and they stopped it and everything, and now it's just like a desolate lot.
Right.
And nothing's being used.
Yep.
Right by Crescent Street, Crescent Municipal.
Yeah.
It, it's just-
So they trashed, they trashed the property.
Yep, and now nothing's being done.
Right.
Yeah, but that's, that's their property, they can cut the trees, we have no, we cannot do anything.
That's, and that's the trouble. We have in the bylaw that they have to calculate the drainage runoff based on water conditions. If we enforce it, which we didn't, I know the other one.
Would that be a violation if they, if they, they cleared the land and that there was an erosion problem because of, you know?
Erosion's a whole different thing, the DPW usually deals with that.
Okay.
If there is erosion, it comes out onto the street, that's it.
So-
The Vinnie list is too long to enforce it, so.
It's been three years, if they started one every three months, we'd be done.
Who does it?
The building inspector.
Building inspector.
Actually, nobody.
Nobody.
I should, yeah, very phrase, who should be doing it?
So our take on the, on this lot?
Well, it's the use, if they wanted to, I don't know, if they wanted to have a community guard in there, they don't need a site plan review. If they wanted to have any kind of other development, any other occurring.
I wonder if they wanted to store ten RVs there with ten parking spaces, or fourteen?
They'd be fine, fourteen is fine.
Fourteen, store fourteen RVs.
But don't tell me the, don't tell me another fourteen parking spaces like behind, uh, what's his name, Gerardo's.
Eighty-five?
Gerardo's has got fourteen line spaces, but he's got seventy-five cars out there. Like, oh, our building inspector's on top of that one.
Did you count them? It'd be seventy-five smart cars.
Seventy-five between the north side, the south side, the illegal parking along Magnolia Drive, which has never gotten a permit, and the ones across the street.
Yeah, okay, but, so we believe they need to-
That's on our zoning list.
But, so what are we saying, they need a site? I'm gonna put your house on the, on the Vinnie's list.
The idea is site plan review if they want fifteen or more parked vehicles there.
Okay.
Unless they can park them without parking spaces.
I think that's due attention.
Park, well, they're not-
How do you park, where, where it sits, so when it's a parking space.
When you approved the, the, you know, the, the lot for flag, did they have to have so many parking spots for each one of those trailers?
No, but they got triggered by the building, they, they existed prior-
No, no, I'm talking about-
Its grandfather, they existed before that requirement was introduced.
You're not suggesting that they actually have marked parking spaces.
I don't need them, but-
But simply, but simply the parking of the RV means that's a parking space, is what you're saying.
Yeah, well, if, if I were living there, I don't care li, or abutting it, I wouldn't care whether it was a line on the ground or not. If there's fifteen parking spaces, I should, there should have been some of them.
I think that's, yeah, that's gonna be a major problem.
Can you make, could you make stipulations? If you were to say to approve that, say, like, okay, you know, you have to put up a fence in the back so that the people in, you know, the condos don't see it, and that, okay, you can only have, you don't, you can clear the land, level it off, but you can't have more than twelve trailers there?
Fourteen.
I'm, I'm just using twelve as an example.
No, cuz if they don't hit fourteen, they come to, don't come to the planning board at all. The building inspector can say, I want thirteen and a half spaces, you have to have a fourteen foot fence, you have to have, he can say whatever he wants, or she, whatever we end up with. I'll take anything, but, um, we need something, and if it, if it's parking vehicles, it's parking vehicles. I mean, I don't know how else to say it.
Which is a parking, which is a parking space, not really like a parking space that's attached to a restaurant, but a parking space nonetheless.
It's a parking space.
I will try and pull-
It doesn't say paved parking, fifteen paved parking spaces.
I'll try to have Toby pull the, um, the request from before to see what exactly they were doing.
Which one? Well, I don't know, well, you can, but I don't know that I would waste your time on that. We just got a informal question from, um, building inspector's office, so I was, I think we just-
It looks to the, someone, uh, someone complained, so they were-
Well, complained about which one, about the Legion?
Storage of, no, yeah, we have to believe, storage of-
Well, it's a whole time. Or else, actually, I think the people maybe they're gonna be developing that, which would be nice.
Okay, what are you looking for?
Next?
Well, on the list, uh, we're done.
Done.
Briarwood Conservation Open Space Restriction?
Oh, whoops, yeah.
We, we got it back from town council, right? And I fell, I fell asleep on it, I don't remember, I think I did something at the last meeting.
It's all still unedited.
We not, do we not have any paper?
Oh, we're waiting for a plan, that's what it is. We're waiting, cuz it refers to a plan, and I replied back to the attorney asking for a survey plan, he said it should be coming in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and we don't have that yet, so we're done with that.
Yes.
And we're not doing the select and licenses for compliance because that's dropped off to a piece of dirt.
Cuz it's not on Vinnie's list.
Yeah.
It's all of Vinnie's list, that's how, that's what started that list initially, three years ago.
Which was the Vinnie's list?
The select and licenses.
Oh.
No, 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 that's a different thing.
Oh?
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, here he is, here's the trouble.
Lujo's here.
He's staying late, overtime.
Oh, this, oh, right, this list, oh, this list, yeah.
Yeah, this alcohol and the store list.
So we're supposed to say if we have any objections to any of this?
Well, if we have issues with any, they're not in violation.
Who was the Briarwood thing, what was our conclusion here?
What?
The Briarwood one, what, what did you?
Briarwood, it's the open space restriction letter, and it refers to a plan that they haven't submitted to us yet.
Okay.
So I was hoping to get the plan, and then I think it's all set, but I gotta-
Do their, their whole project, they're not done, are they?
Well, it's not, the work's not done, but they've, they have to set aside twenty-five percent or some thirty percent in open space.
Oh, for the green zone, or, okay.
And town council, we sent it out to town council and a week or so ago, or two weeks ago, she came back and said, in the bylaw, it talks about it being in perpetuity, and they're saying they don't wanna do in perpetuity, they don't wanna allow public access to it cuz it's a private area, and I think we talked about these things and it all, we said it was okay. But, uh, so I think we were all set with that document, she was just verifying it, we were all right with that. And then we just need the plan that shows where it is on the site.
Okay.
Comparing.
Why did you mention Dick Heaton in your letter?
I wrote it to a letter?
Yeah.
I wrote it to a letter?
Chris Ruchel.
I signed a letter.
You signed a letter?
Yeah. I don't know what the letter was.
Oh, it's about the, what's about the housing production plan. Oh, it's about the, we're supposed to housing production plan.
Well, it got submitted, isn't it?
Just says, his person wrote the letter.
It, it just says completed last year by Dick Heaton and updated by Cog. But I don't think Dick Heaton's worked for us for a while.
No, completed last year?
Yeah.
Completed twenty thirteen.
What's the date of the letter? Did you just find this in your files?
Oh, yeah. This is from twenty twelve. No, it's just October, oh, yeah. No, it's October seventeenth, twenty eighteen. I mean, it's, I'm right over, okay.
It's getting late, Doc.
It is getting late. We're getting punchy now. This, we tried this to be, trying to be punctual today.
I mean, it's written, it's done. It doesn't really matter.
Did anybody see anything on here that we, is on Vinnie's list also? I noticed finders. We don't, that's on, they're on Vinnie's.
That's on Vinnie's list, is it?
Keepers, keepers.
This is Vinnie's list.
Keeper's is closed, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we still issuing a permit to keepers?
No.
Cause then there was, then it was something else for a little bit.
Something else for a week.
Yeah.
I think they took the sign down.
Yeah.
Alright.
I don't see anything else in here that's on Vinnie's list.
Grumpy's dogs got one?
Who's?
Grumpy's dogs, they have, uh, the truck that comes into our...
That's a transient, transient vendor.
Good hot dogs.
Alright.
Anybody try them?
Yes, yes, very good.
Alright. So do we, do we, is anybody here have any problems with these, uh?
I would just go by what we have on the other list. I mean, if it's not, if it's on the other list, that's where we have problems.
Jungle Jims sells fruit and vegetables? I don't think that's right.
Jungle Jims or?
Jungle Jims.
That's where the small trees.
I guess.
Do you wanna compare it against Vinnie's list right now?
No, I wanna go...
No, no, it's...
We should have done this in advance.
I know we should have. That's true.
That's why you get...
What's the date?
By eleven twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine. We, I'll go through the, I'll go through it and make it work.
And what are we gonna do if one of these things is on Vinnie's list?
Same thing we always do. We send, send a note saying they're not in compliance with site plan review or they're not in compliance with zoning and then it's up to the building inspector to decide what he wants to do, cause it's a zoning enforcement issue.
Right, okay. Reports from other boards?
But he doesn't know it. He can't write it.
Well, when do we hope to hire a new person? Don't say when they happen to wander in.
I know, we've hired three, haven't we?
Anyway, I don't still know where it is.
Uh, reports from other boards? Anybody?
What are we doing? Uh, Affordable Housing Trust is aggressively pursuing a, a couple of, um, consultants to do some more work on the land as far as, uh...
Feasibility.
Vis- visibility of the whole project. How's that?
Okay.
There you go.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Transportation committee met, but we didn't meet.
You didn't get a form?
There's no quote.
No quote.
I wanna ask something on that.
You can't, there was no form.
Alright.
You can ask, but...
Yeah, let me know when, let me know next time I meet, I'll, I may show up, cause I had a couple of questions on, or actually I can let you know.
We didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't officially, uh, schedule the next meeting, but it's typically the first Thursday of the month, which we, December sixth. So I would say...
So I'll try to get your comments.
Okay.
Twelve, six.
Yeah, we, we discuss things informally.
Yeah, yeah. Well, did we get something to review? The corridor, that's what it was.
Route one forty corridor?
We got the Route one forty corridor stuff.
Well, the final version didn't make, yeah.
Well, we got the draft for comments and the only comments I had was that I thought we had talked a couple of years, five, seven years ago, we talked with Seemark and C to try to get the connection from Hartwell Street down to Route one forty as a potential development project and the realignment of that S curve at the town line.
You'd have, you'd have to do both of those at the same time. The Hartwell, the Hartwell connection would be absolutely a nightmare if you tried to connect to it now.
Yes.
Because it's at a steep hill and a bad, at a bad location.
Exactly.
And I, I agree that if we...
Preliminary evaluation.
I agree that we have some, uh, businesses going in there, which looks like we are.
Yeah.
In fact, one of them would be on the extension of Hartwell Street and so wouldn't it be nicer for them to just go down that way?
It would be very much nicer.
Would DCR be involved in that? Would they be involved? Okay.
Oh, yeah, they, they're butters, so they'd have to.
Right, because they'd be concerned about the impact of any new road or intersection.
Yeah.
Cause all that water goes right down into the reservoir, right?
Well, yeah.
I have to make sure it doesn't.
Right, it's, it doesn't now and it won't in the future, but we have to make sure that that happens in the design, but yes.
Right, that's a long-term plan.
Yes, but it's, that's why this is the Route one forty plan, right?
Okay, um, and the joint committee is meeting tomorrow. And we have already met with the folks who wanna put in the, um...
Retail?
Combination retail and the cultivator business o- off of, at the corner. They would, they would put the retail business at the corner of Hartwell and Shrewsbury Street, in those houses that he's gonna knock down. That's where he wants to meet.
And that's a, that's a business owned, does that make sense?
Right.
Also met with the ones that wanna put it in over here next to the post office.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't aware of those people. I've talked to...
When was that? Last week?
I've talked to probably two or three people in the last three weeks on the phone, but that location wasn't mentioned. So, oh, yeah, we're the, yeah, n- directly next to the, oh, next to the pet place.
Kind of between the pet food and the post office.
Between the pet place and then the new, there's an up, there's a glasses place.
Post office place.
Isn't there like a, oh, like, so the bylaw doesn't prohibit it, cause you got a pedi, uh, not a pediatrician, a pediatric dentist right there?
Yeah, I said that too, but no.
It's not, okay, alright, that's fine, that's, I don't...
They just have to control their odor problem or whatever.
Well, you're not supposed to have an odor anyway, but...
That's what I mean. They're supposed to control their, they will have to.
Might make it easier to get fillings.
Right, oh.
Just stand out front here for a little bit and then we're gonna go inside. So are you, is the joint commission going to put together like the steps and the procedures for people?
That's tomorrow night.
That's what you guys are gonna do? Okay.
I think so.
And then get, let us know where we fit in would be good.
Well, that's, that's another question I have as well, like, over there, where it's just, it's an existing everything, but now it's a new use on the use table, you know?
There's no s- uh, is it a change of use for retail to retail?
Well, it's a change of use to marijuana. There was never marijuana.
Not only that, you know, we, we may be getting a more parking. It's a business center, but for this business, more parking.
Well, we have to decide on how much parking is required.
I thought the bylaw said something about having to go through the site plan review process if you change the use to this.
Change of use.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Well, it's a shared parking lot with the billions of spaces.
Right, right. Well, they may not, I mean, whatever the retail space, they might have required twelve parking spaces. The marijuana place may only require twenty. And then it's not the fifteen that triggers a site plan review, so they wouldn't have to come for site plan review, but I thought in the bylaw it said...
No, but this, this is entirely a different business, so they may have to come.
It's a different everything.
The planning board is given the...
So it's a change of use, but a change of use and parking is what is done.
We don't know how many parking.
But they need to come to us with a special permit anyway, but separate from the site plan.
And the site plan, well, the special permit process is the site plan review process.
Yeah, that's what's weird though, the site plan review on existing everything. I mean, like the, the developments there.
Existing parking, existing building.
Existing parking, existing building. The only thing that's changing is use.
Yeah.
Cause they're not changing, I mean, they're changing the building a little to put another ventilation.
Yeah, but they're gonna, yeah, so we look at the ventilation, we look at the safety, all the requirements. Site plan review, we do the site plan reviews, don't we?
We do the site plan review, but site plan review never has ventilation on it.
Well, if it is some, a situation where there's, uh, a potential odor and nuisance, we do. Any nuisance type of stuff. We try to address it, so it doesn't get built and then the board of health has to deal with it.
So would it be like the drainage ki- uh, details?
Drainage, noise.
Well, the drain, not the drainage on that one, but the drainage on our site plan reviews drainage has the layout and like the type, like storm scepter or whatever, all that kind of hardware. Would we have that level of detail?
We don't have that in our plans.
No.
No, we just, it's a standard. It's a, it's a, it's more of a performance standard type of thing. And that actually more comes from your bylaw that you wrote. It shall not be noisy, smelly.
Right, I'm just wondering what level is gonna be on this, the drawing, the site plan review?
Yeah.
I don't know. Some of them will be good, some will be terrible, just like every other.
Well, what's the requirement, I guess? Wayne's gonna ask too, if he's involved.
So because of the marijuana retail, we have to have a site plan review?
I thought that's what you were...
If it was a doc, if they sold candy bars only, not just, I mean, just regular candy bars, it would be a site plan review. If they sold...
Probably not. It's a retail, retail.
Retail's retail.
Yeah, so it's...
Site plan review is marijuana retail.
If it changes to marijuana, we're giving them a permit to be an adult user marijuana.
A permit, but why does it trigger site plan review in this case?
I think that's our process. We'll have to look at the bylaw, but I think that's, that's what we do.
The bylaw says the process was to go through the site plan review, cause it's already set up, there's dates, there's reviews, there's all this stuff.
I think, I think we were using the site plan review process to get the public hearing.
As the, as the permit, okay.
I think we're, mainly we want the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, good.
But, you know, the, it's complicated a little bit because it's an existing whole program over there.
Yeah, but what about the other buildings? That's also existing.
We'll talk about this.
Tomorrow.
Uh, meeting minutes?
Wait, Chris, Dr. Ruto has a question.
That's fine, I just, you should put this on maybe a future agenda meeting, so people that might be doing this might reach your agenda and say, while the planning board's talking about what the process is gonna be in regards to West opening the facility, maybe we'll come to that meeting that night, but tonight they didn't know it was on because you having this...
Well, this is part of what we'll talk about tomorrow night, right? Is the order of things and the, and an outline for what applicants would need to do?
The modern idea is the application process. That's what's on the agenda.
Yeah, the application process, which would be all this stuff?
The application, filing for an application.
Filing for an application.
Again, you guys were talking more about what the planning board's looking for.
Well, but in, in the application process...
But the fact that you need to apply to the planning board and you need to apply to the selectmen for various things will be on that outline.
Well, like this, this guy, Andrew Kazkoff, there, there's a guy came in tonight and asked us about that, where he fits into the process, where, where the whole process fits together, when he should come to us compared to when he should go to the board of selectmen or where he should have his, what is it called, public outreach?
Yes.
The community outreach.
Community outreach meeting.
No.
You know, the order of all that stuff.
After our next meeting, you guys can put an agenda item, cause I know when we have, we had an agenda item on our selectmen's meeting and there were people that were in that, talking about that and trying to do it. They came to our meeting, but people don't know that you guys are talking about it tonight, so they couldn't get the...
Well, I see, that's why I asked the question about...
Wait, did you, did you read our agenda?
Did it say marijuana?
It said Andrew Kazkoff to discuss proposed marijuana product.
No, that, I'm saying everything you just said.
And that's why, but that's why the other guy was here. He had a great question. He was right on top of stuff, so.
Yeah, and, and that's why the, the question I asked was, is the joint commission going to put, figure out what the procedures are and outline those so that
No, we, tomorrow is just...
Distributed to people who are interested, right?
Yeah, we are talking about, the board of selectmen is talking about that.
Right, so we should, so, and that's, and all we said right now was, when you get that figured out, let us know what it is.
And we can... Maybe you should have an agenda item next time that you guys are gonna discuss it.
Sure, okay. You know, item for discussing the details of the planning board's requirements.
Yeah.
Because as part of this outline or whatever we're, we're gonna come up with tomorrow, we can say, you need to apply to the planning board. The planning board can then supply more details about what exactly that is.
We also have to know when the planning board fits in there.
Right.
Well, right.
Which is what you're, what that application branch is doing.
People are gonna wanna know the timeframes and how long it takes to get this stuff done, where that fits into, you know, when do they do the community outreach? When do they go to the selectmen?
That's, that's set by the CC State, all that stuff.
But people need to understand it all.
We should write it down, though.
I think from what I've seen so far, the people that are coming in front of us...
They're more knowledgeable than we are.
Know way more. We're learning more from what they're telling us.
I would agree.
From them, they say, or from me.
I would agree with you on that.
Maybe we should have the applicants get together and write this procedure for us.
I, I was just saying, yeah, cause do we want that to continue or do we wanna look like the smart guys?
Oh, we'll never look like the smart guys.
I think every town is in the same boat.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's true.
Absolutely.
Meeting minutes? Open for motions about meeting minutes. We only have one set, is that correct? October twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks good to me. I moved to accept. I moved to accept meeting minutes from October twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any noes? Any abstentions? Yeah, okay, thank you. And we're confirming December twelfth at seven o'clock as our next meeting date. So we can all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Chris, you wanna take these microphones with you?
Okay. So we do not meet in two weeks?
No.
No?
No.
No.
Do not meet in two weeks.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Right, no, yeah, yeah. December twelfth, okay? Were you done?
Still calling.
Thank you. Any other motions to do things like, oh, wait, wait, to be signed?
Wait, oh, when, when don't we meet again? What were you just saying?
Next time, ne- in, in two weeks.
Next time, next time we don't meet.
We don't meet next time. Okay, so we're, that's, we don't meet on the twenty-eighth.
No, twenty-eighth, okay.
We meet on the twelfth. We have things to sign, sorry. Bills.
As always.
VHB four forty-seven for New House Circle. I'll pass it this way. We have four hundred dollars for VHB for Holy Cross. And we have another four hundred dollars and something for the Girl Scouts.
Awesome. Oh, not for cookies?
Not cookies.
Not for cookies.
That's a lot of cookies.
Maybe they should have retail.
They can put it right next to each other to the...
Marijuana should go right next to them.
Didn't we get a shellacking for even saying that?
Yes, you, you were, you were chastised.
Yes, censured.
Censured.
Again.
That is right.
Impeachment is next.
I didn't do the third signature. Who cares? I don't really care, except for the finance people won't do it.
Need, is all we need, three?
Yes.
Yeah. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll send that again.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Quarter to ten, sorry.
That's okay. I'd love to. I'll stick that one.